Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the June 24th, 2019 Town Council meeting. I call this meeting's order at 7:03 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening we have the special guest Spencer Little from our local Boy Scout Troop 701.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I did want to take a moment to recognize Spencer. Spencer, you may recall, was before this council a few months ago and he was here related to his Eagle Scout project and his project was at the dog park. And I am pleased to report that Spencer was able to manage a project very successfully. And Spencer, perhaps you could talk through, if you would, what exactly you did at the park?
So for the dog park, I added a tire that the dogs can run under or jump over and then I added a ramp for the dogs to run up, over and down. Overall, the park needed just like, because the dogs, when they run in the same spot over again, they move the mulch. So we tried to flatten out the mulch as much as possible. And then the last thing that we did was add a fire hydrant for the dogs to relieve themselves. And painted it like a donation to kind of add to the theme of dogs and the dog park.
That's terrific. And Spencer, thank you so much. I know that you and your troop did a tremendous job. It was a team effort certainly, led by you, and thank you for that. And I did also just want to take a moment. You had worked, I know, with our Department of Public Works and Mr. Fazio specifically. He could not be here this evening, but he did send along a note that I wanted the community to hear because I think it really speaks to you and your troop. So it says, "Dear Mr. Mayo and Town Council, managing the fields and parks for the last 21 years, I unfortunately see how now more and more kids and adults just do not respect the properties of our great town. Despite trash barrels, trash and litter are constantly left behind. This lack of decency makes it easy to lose faith in our youth and parenting. Fortunately, the scouts are still out teaching and living by codes of respect, honor, and giving back. Josh with Patty Heights, Spencer with the dog park, prove there are still outstanding kids willing to give up their own time, organize, delegate other scouts, and see projects through to completion. Please applaud them for 'paying forward back to our town.'" Dennis. So I think he sums it up. So Spencer, thank you very much for all that you've done. You've really improved our town and we are eternally grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also did want to also acknowledge Josh Polischuk who had done some terrific work improving Patty Heights as well. I think we may have an image of that. Unfortunately Joshua couldn't be here this evening, but he really transformed that space as you can see from the image here. And it's what a tremendous improvement. And again, it was through hard work and dedication that that was done. So we thank him as well and we congratulate them both on those Eagle Scout projects. Moving on, our agenda, item number three is attendance. I see that all councilors are in attendance, as is Madam Clerk, Town Council, and Town Administrator. Moving on to item four is approval of the minutes from the June 10th, 2019 meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing a vote of seven to zero, the motion passes. Next is item number five. This is public engagement. This is the opportunity for the public to speak before the council and for the council to ask any questions of the public in response. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, the first one signed in is Bob McLaughlin.
If you could please take the table, state your name and address.
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Good evening everybody.
Good evening.
I came down here for one issue, quite frankly, about the Galvin School. I had a few questions about that, maybe a few comments, but I can't miss this opportunity to wish Pleasure Island a 60th anniversary party here. It opened Friday on June 22nd, 60 years ago.
Wow.
And little did they know it was going to last 11 seasons, but anyway, that's the anniversary. Yeah, the concerns I have about the school, and it probably will come up, I believe it's on the agenda tonight about the Galvin School and the issues with the slab, is being a electrician and working construction, you know, over the last 50 years, I think, I believe, and maybe we should maybe concerning this issue, maybe a public forum might be in order to really field out some questions on what really happened down there. My opinion, it's either the engineering, something was wrong with the engineering, or construction. Either one of those is probably going to be the candidate for what happened down there. I do know that we have a representative from the town. It used to be called the Clerk of Works, I don't know what they, Mr. Donaco, do you know what they call the, what used to be the Clerk of Works?
Clerk of Works.
On a project like this.
The owner's project manager.
Is it?
Yeah.
Owner's project manager? Owner's project manager, yeah. So anyway, yeah, I'd be concerned about what, you know, what really happened down there in regards to the problems because we have, not only is the slab an issue, but we also have stuff in the slab. There's conduits that are going to be in the slab, this conduit that's probably below the slabs. And so going forward, not only do we want this to be a fix, we want it to be the right fix, but we want it to be a fix forever so we're not going back in there four or five years from now, you know, repairing anything that could be damaged. I did a quick Google search today, anybody's welcome to do it. Lynn Classical High School had a very similar situation, probably even worse. Classical opened up in 1999, I believe, and they went through millions and millions and millions of dollars. They had to, they literally had to shut that whole first floor down. My understanding is that the second and third levels are, you know, they're on pilings, they're on steel, but the slab level is the issue. And I believe that the slab issue in Lynn was, actually it was built on a landfill and so that slab was basically floating. So my concerns about the fact that Wakefield built theirs after Classical had their problems, you know, I'd like to know whether there was any input into that. And, you know, and we do have a building up at the head of the lake, American Mutual, that was built in 1958. Whatever they did up there, they did 100% right. You know, that building's been up there for over 60 years now. And I just saw some construction photographs that they had at a presentation up there with the friends of Lake Wana-Powhatl and they put in some substantial foundations into that building. I just want to make sure that we did this thing right and if it wasn't done right, we want to, you know, we really want to get this thing corrected. And that's really all I have to say. So, you know, maybe this will be cleared up when the, you know, if the public, the committee that puts the, that's in charge of building the buildings, whatever the name is, maybe they can clear that up. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you. And as you, thank you for your concern. As you point out, we do have representatives to speak on that issue this evening. If anyone on the council has questions now, certainly we can entertain them, but we will have the representatives who can answer them at that time if that pleases the council. All right, well, thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Very welcome. Okay, thank you.
We have a pretty aggressive agenda this evening and I'm seeing the time now. We have a public hearing that was scheduled for 7:10. I'd like to stay on track with that. So for the moment, I would like to set the public engagement aside and we can reengage the public engagement after we have that, if that pleases the body. And Tom, there's nothing special required, correct? Because we have to stay on schedule with the 7:10. So let's go with the first public hearing then, and that is CNC MCC LLC, doing business as Blue Moon Grill.
Good evening.
Just, Town Council Mullen, should I open the public hearing vote now or should I wait till an anticipated vote to open that up?
I think you've opened the public hearing.
Fair, that's fair. Good evening. If you could just identify yourselves, please.
Certainly. My name is Brian Chase. I'm an attorney in Haverhill, Massachusetts. I counsel to CNC, MCC, LCC, LLC, excuse me, it's a mouthful even for an attorney. And with me is Kristen Indrosano. She's the manager of the LLC.
Hi, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Kristen Indrosano.
Your address, please.
Oh, my God.
You can play one.
Oh, sorry. 7 Dallas Street, Wakefield, Mass.
And you'll be here before us this evening for an all alcohol liquor license.
That is correct, sir.
If you could maybe explain the details of that?
Certainly. So the application that is before you is for a business that is a well-established business in the town known as the Blue Moon Grill that is operated by Ms. Indrosano's uncle, Vincenzo Chuchelo. Forgive me, sir. So, and Mr. Chuchelo is here with us tonight and it's a family-owned business and the Chuchelos are relocating from Wakefield and they're moving south. And the niece, my client, is taking over the business. She's been working there for over two and a half years and she has over 20 years of experience in this business and she has opted to buy this business and she has submitted an application to you, the council. And she has the Serve Safe certification, she has insurance in place, she has an application that will be pending before the ABCC with the state. And we've tried to be very thorough about our application to make sure that this council is satisfied as to her qualifications and that she has taken this very seriously about her responsibilities in serving the public. She takes these responsibilities very seriously. She's not changing the menu, she's not changing the drink menu. She's going to keep the hours the same. She's going to be working the same hours, she's not changing the hours. She is basically maintaining an established entity in the same manner that it's been operating for all the years that she's been working there. So I'm happy to answer any questions and to the extent that I can't, Ms. Indrosano's here to assist.
So, thank you for that. Why don't we open up to questions? Anyone have any questions? I should point out that your full application has been reviewed by everyone on the council as part of our packet of materials that we look at in advance. So any questions of anyone on the council?
No.
I guess one question I have, tip certified?
Yeah, just saying.
Any other questions?
This is easy.
All right. With that, I will entertain.
Public. Anyone in the public?
Anyone in the public have any concerns, questions, or comments? Okay, seeing none. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the all alcohol license requested by CNC MCC LLC, DBA, Blue Moon Grill.
That's so moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Donaco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, a seven, zero vote, the motion passes. Congratulations and best of luck to you moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much for you folks. Congratulations.
Yes, very, thank you for your time in Wakefield. You did a great job there.
Well, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Good luck, Kristen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next public hearing is at 7:20, so we have a slot in for further public engagement. Madam Clerk, was there anyone else from the public that was?
Yes, the second one is Julie Scott.
So Ms. Scott, if you could please approach, state your name, address.
Julie Scott, Main Street in Wakefield. I have no L's or X's after my name. My name is Julie Scott and I live on Main Street here in Wakefield and I would like to sincerely thank the Town Council and the Town Administrator and all the other interested parties and committees for promoting the envisioned Wakefield meetings and including members of the public. I have felt that the public input has been valuable and that the town should continue reaching out. Each of the three meetings that I have attended has consisted of some of the same core people, but I have noticed that each time there are new people in attendance. The meetings have been efficient and polite and people feel comfortable raising their hands and sharing their ideas. Their attendance shows that the community cares and that they have tremendously valuable ideas that they would like to share. The discussion also included an important point. People are concerned that the town was giving away some power by including state funds in the design and some are concerned that the state would be, would have a tremendous amount of say in the final design, maybe even more than the town would, and we all need to keep that in mind. I would also like to thank the Town Council, specifically Counselor Butt and Town Administrator Steve Mayo, for the recent work on the bench committee, and I hope I haven't left anybody else out up there. Reaching out to a diverse group or other groups who are active in town creates an opportunity for the ideas to flow from those who have shown that they do tremendous work for the town with their volunteerism of time, effort, and expertise. Thanks for listening when I spoke of the town bodies needing to reach out to others who have worked so hard for the betterment of the town. Thanks to all who are involved in this endeavor, but I do have a concern. It's about an issue from last week's envisioned meeting that's on tonight's agenda as item 14. A specific question came up during last Tuesday night's meeting about Common Street being made one way. And in the response from the professionals who were hired by the town and were presenting their work thus far, it was stated that the design process is just that, it's still a process, and that nothing has been finalized. A number of Town Councilors and the Town Administrator were at Tuesday night's meeting and were present to hear this along with me. When I saw the agenda for tonight's meeting, I saw that you will be discussing Article 14 tonight, which concerns making a portion of Common Street one way. I know I don't have the background behind this agenda item, but as it is stated in the agenda with its specific wording, it does not correlate with what was discussed at the envisioned presentation last Tuesday. I know I don't have all the facts behind why it's on the agenda for tonight, but based on what was stated at last week's public meeting, I would hope that this idea could be postponed until the studies and designs for the rest of the downtown proposal are complete. I look forward to more opportunities to intend to envision Wakefield forums and I encourage all other interested town folk to do the same. And thank you all so much for your time and your volunteerism. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so we are now at 7:20 and that begins the second public hearing, the setting of water and sewer rates. So Mr. Mullen, I'm wondering, can we open up this hearing and then suspend to complete public participation of those that are here?
Yes.
And then resume?
I think that's a good idea.
Just to keep, if that pleases everyone on the body. Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Mullen?
You just declared the public hearing open, but then you'd need a motion to continue it.
All right, so I am declaring then the setting of water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2020 open and I will entertain a motion to table it just for the moment while we get through some other matters.
Some.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Chines. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous votes, seven, nothing. Motion passes, so just for the moment, we'll just finish public participation. Sorry about that. Thank you. Just got settled in. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else for public participation?
Yes, the third and final one is Bob Mitchell.
Yes, Bob. Good evening. If you could state your name and address.
Good evening, Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding Street.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm asking you to postpone or vote down tonight's agenda, item 14A, to make Common Street one way between Church and Lafayette. At last week's meeting for the state grant to redesign downtown, the traffic engineers heard from many citizens of their concern of making streets one way. The fact is, the push to make streets one way is solely because the choice to change from angled to parallel parking will reduce parking convenience to storefronts. The engineers stated they heard from citizens and will go back and make changes to their early design, a design they stated is still less than 25% completed. It is comforting to know that professional engineers are reworking the design based on taxpayer input, but it's infuriating that two days later municipal leaders chose to ignore the same taxpaying voters. I want each Town Council member to be confident that they can convince the voters that they have done their homework on this issue. They have reviewed the current and proposed impact two. Peak traffic counts and wait times Monday through Saturday morning and Monday through Friday evenings. Counts include the following, where Church Street intersects with both Salem and Main and North Ave, where Main and North intersect with Yale, Aborn, and Chestnut. Also, have you reviewed a survey of those who pay for and use these streets? Did those survey indicate they would be more or less likely to shop in downtown Wakefield? This reminds me of a young couple who just bought a small house and agreed to hire professional architects for a complete renovation, but well before all in the household agreed on the final architecture, one member has a carpenter come in and make a change to the house ignoring the other household members. I hope we can see some wisdom from that and not make that same mistake. On a slightly different matter, Market Street. I want to show you a quick picture of arguably the crown jewel of American retail innovation, Amazon. They chose to place their store at Market Street in Linfield where more of their customers can park closer to their storefront because they chose angled parking. This is a complex issue. I don't have the solutions, but with any complex issue, thorough vetting with all stakeholders leads to optimum solutions. We enjoy a beautiful downtown with a uniquely wide boulevard, which I just drove tonight. It's really spectacular. It's this wide view. You don't get that, you get that in very few communities in New England. I think we can all agree it is best showcased at the upcoming Fourth of July parade next week. I hope we get this one right. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone have any comments?
I have a comment, not an engagement.
Vice Counselor Santos.
Sorry you were infuriated, but we've been talking about making Common Street a one way for a long time. It had not, it was not just connected with Envision. And I'm not suggesting that we might not put this vote off. I think there's some good reasons why, not that, what you mentioned, but I was at that meeting, there were a couple of councilors there, and I know the comments you're talking about, and you and Julie, with regard to us saying nothing was set in stone. My understanding that was more about Princess and Common Street. I mean, Princess and whatever the other street is. Center. But this is something that not just this council, but others have been talking about. So it's not something that we heard and ignored two days after. I just want to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else for public participation?
Yes, I'm sorry, we do. We have one more. It's the Wakefield Independence Day Committee.
If you could state your name and address.
Brian Fox. Go ahead. I haven't heard else you want.
Name and address.
Brian Fox, 621 Elm Street.
Amy Braid, 410 Salem Street.
Ashley Fox, 12 Alisa Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I know you guys were a late addition, but if you could please maybe just give us a bit of an update as to why you're here this evening.
Sure. The parade is about 10 days away now and unfortunately, we're having a little bit of a down year when it comes to volunteers as well as fundraising. This year, we're down about 20% of our fundraising from even last year, which was even down a little bit last year from the year before that. So we're kind of facing this little bit of a downswing of money. We're not sure what's going on, if it's malaise from being the fifth parade back or if there's other reasons. And for volunteers, we've had a few volunteers that had to move on for various reasons. We haven't been able to replace them. Our goal every year is to probably have about 60 people to help us out and we've had about 29 for the past months who are really struggling to fill those roles. It's not, not easy to do, is the Fourth of July, as you all know, so it's hard to find people who are willing to spend a lot of their day working to set up the parade instead of just watching it when it comes by.
And anyone have any questions? Counselor May.
Good evening. Quick question, volunteers, so you usually have 60, how many do you need in addition to what you have currently? Like, what's your stat for that?
When I checked before I came, we had about 29 people so far.
Okay.
So we're probably, if we had 20, 23 more people, we could probably manage that a problem, but we're working on it.
All different capacities, I mean.
All different capacities. We need people at the end of the parade route to help park the vehicles that come down to Mike's Gym and the middle school, people at the staging area when the 2,000 participants start arriving to get them lined up and where they need to be, parade route collectors, which is where the buckets are used. We can usually get about $9,000 to $11,000 every year in just the buckets by walking the parade. That's primarily of people who come from out of town to see the parade. For in-town, we send the mailers out with the light bills or have other fundraisers, but for many people who are coming to town for the day, the only opportunity they would have to donate if they didn't go on our website is by putting money in the bucket as it walks by them. This year, we're at a point where we're about 50 kids shy for our business sign carriers. Usually it's children, we pay them $25 on a t-shirt to carry business sponsorship signs. Without another 50 kids, we'll have adult volunteers that would normally carry these buckets, carry the business signs. That's money we've already accepted. We have a responsibility to those businesses to make sure we carry those signs. So right now, we're looking at trying to find more kids to carry the business signs as well as volunteers that can fill in those other gaps. If need be, we'll shuffle people to other places where they're needed.
Counselor Donaco.
Just continuing that, thank you, Mr. J. Age on the children?
Children can be between eight and 15 to be a sign carrier. And this year, we're adding kids 16 to 19 to also be paid to be a supervisor, to walk with the other kids, keep them spaced out so business can actually see their signs, make sure the kids are safe, there's no issues with them. When you have 108-year-olds carrying signs, you have to, you know, be watching out for them.
It's my understanding that you're still looking for volunteers at the Galvin to assist in the parking of vehicles?
Park vehicles, walk doing collections, and be in the staging area. And to walk with the children. If we can't fill it with older kids that are paid to do, we'll have adults that walk up with them as well, or have to carry the signs, whatever, whatever happens.
Counselor May, yes. So just, it's follow-up. So people are watching tonight and they're mortified that there's not enough volunteers. Who do they call? Do you have a number here or are you going to put it in the paper?
They can reach out to myself, brian.fox@juliparade.org. I'm keeping a spreadsheet to keep track of everything.
Would you advertise that as well, they need, and maybe in the paper as hopefully free?
Mr. Sardell is here tonight, so we'll find out if there's something tomorrow.
He'll put that in the paper, good point. Okay, no, I just think more people know we have a great town that has a great volunteer nature as well as donating, I think will pick up. I think this is great, you're in tonight.
As long as we can get the buckets going on Parade Day, I think we'll be able to make up a lot of that, that efficiency.
I think we can get the buckets going tonight, Brian.
I should say, on very short notice, I just learned this morning of some of these numbers and they're not where we want them to be yet, but we have time. And so I think it's, this is a call to action. And the parade is 74 years strong and your efforts are tireless. I know that you begin July 5th every year, for the next year, and your team is incredible and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the town as a whole. It's a great unifying event for our town, it's a great event for all of us. I should point out that on the TV screens at home and also on the screens in the back here, we have juliparade.org. That's also a site you can go to and I'll just say, to support the parade, you can do that. And to Counselor May's point, these buckets are iconic. Anyone who's been to the parade has seen the buckets. We've seen the neon shirts going up and down. So with that, I'd like to, you know, join some of my councilors this evening in helping you guys fill those buckets tonight. So if we can have a bucket.
So bring them a bucket. Come on. We can move it along.
Brian, you haven't been shy in a long time, so bring them.
Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Oh, thank you. Turn around.
Yeah, don't be shy. Never. Thank you all.
I give all my time to my children.
July Parade, October.
Exactly. We can. Vice Chair Santos.
So Brian and Parade Committee, can we hold a bucket?
Yes.
While we walk?
If you're, if you are willing to hold a bucket, I can't say no to that.
I am so willing and I'm sure we can.
You want a T-shirt? Yeah, you need a T-shirt.
So we can, we can.
Usually with my pretty white dress in my school.
You can easily call people out.
Oh.
I do it myself. It goes really well before we throw someone directly.
Another bucket challenge.
Great idea. I'll take a bucket.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
I was going to say something similar. If you don't have enough sign holders, I'd be willing not to. I mean, you have nine people right here who could carry signs. We don't all have to walk together. People know who we are. So that's another suggestion.
Counselor By.
And I just wanted to thank you guys all for your efforts. This will be my third year volunteering, so I'm encouraging everyone that wants to volunteer, show up at 12. They let you do some fun stuff.
We push a little bit further back to 12:30 this year.
So you get an extra time to see the activity on the lower common that are happening with the West Side Social Club. But they put you to work and it is great, and you're ready by five to March. Last year, Counselor Smith-Galvin and I got to just some of the float. So you get kind of full jobs. Reach out to Brian or Amy.
And get the T-shirt.
Ashley, if you can.
Anyone in the orange T-shirt.
And get the orange T-shirt.
Who doesn't want an orange T-shirt?
Well, thank you for coming this evening. We wish you the best of luck, and we know the parade will be a huge success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, please.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, does that conclude public engagement?
That does, yes.
All right, we have one other item, and then we'll get back to the public hearing. So that would be item number seven, recognition and thanks. Do we have members of Main Streets or any of the local business sponsors, Keith's Trees Service? If you could come on up, please. Main Streets, Keith's Tree Service, Rebirth, Transformation, the Savings Bank, and the Wakefield Daily Item. Right up to the table, if you could. Just be right behind the table, please. So just wanted to have you all please come up and recognize you. You may have seen that there were a number of kiosks that were going up around town. I think the last of them has gone up today. And the council is incredibly grateful to all of you. Main Streets spearheaded this project, and they had tremendous support from Rebirth, from the Wakefield Daily Item, from the Savings Bank, and Keith's Tree Service. And without that support, we wouldn't have these kiosks. We're incredibly excited and incredibly appreciative as a town for what you were able to do. The fundraising was substantial, and your contributions were substantial. And we want to make sure that you get the credit that all of you deserve for the hard work and your commitment to our town and your investment in its vibrancy. So thank you for that. We have a policy we'll be talking about later this evening, but we did just want to, as a body, take a moment to recognize all of you because what you have done has really made a difference in our community, and we're looking forward to enjoying the kiosks and the information that will be contained for many, many decades to come. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move back to Agenda Item Six, the second public hearing, which is the setting of water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2020. Welcome to the Department of Public Works. And if you could just identify yourselves, please.
I'm Rick Stinson, Director of Public Works. And with me is Joe Conway to my right, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Bill Renaud, my Town Engineer.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. You all have the water and sewer rates. And I have three items here that I'll go through. The first one being the water and sewer rates itself. The recommendation for the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 20 is water, $7.30 per 100 cubic feet, and an $18 per quarter service charge. On the suicide, the rate is $11.20 per 100 cubic feet and $20 per quarter for a service charge. Page four of the document you have covers the recommendation, and there will be five votes that you'll be required to take when you're, when we get to that point. The combined rate increase is 6.56%. There are a number of reasons. The majority of that is in the water side. A couple things on both water and sewer. The MWRA assessment does go up every year based on their cost. Last year, we purchased in calendar year 2018 substantially more water than we have in the past from the MWRA, and that was due to a couple of reasons. One, we had a manganese problem in the lake, Crystal Lake, and we had to shut that down for about three and a half months, meaning that we bought a lot more water from the MWRA. And the fire at the church utilized an awful lot of water for that fire. And so we ended up purchasing a substantial amount of more water from the MWRA. The Public Works Water and Sewer Division is self-sustaining and enterprise funds. Our average bill is lower than Melrose and Reading. Stonem, as of today, has not set their rates yet. They generally a little lower than us, but I understand they're going up this year, and the question is how much. Consumption for everyone, so you know, is lower than it was in 1959. And when consumption declines, rates are negatively impacted. It's like any product. The more you produce, the cheaper the product gets. So when consumption declines, it impacts not only the reserves, it impacts whether you can do capital projects, warrant articles, address emergencies. So consumption shortfalls impact us a lot. The town should have, in my opinion, around $2 million in the water reserve because we have a water treatment plant, a water tank that is 1928, and a slow sand filter system that is also in the 1920s, all of which will be coming up shortly. And we're about, at the end of fiscal year 18, we were at around 628,000. And that may drop a little this coming year. On the suicide, we're in pretty good shape because we've rebuilt or are in the process of doing the last sewer pumping station. We have 11, and we have funded that project. So there, we should have about $1 million in the reserve on the suicide. This year, because of low reserves, the water capital outlay did not go to the reserve. It went to the rate. So we funded the 75,000 of that capital outlay out of the rate because of low reserve. And it's important, I can't stress it enough, it's important to generate a sufficient reserve each year. The combined increase on the fall, the water and sewer bill, and these numbers are all after the discount, is $131.40 for the year on an average bill. And the quarterly increase is $32.85 on that bill. What does that mean in terms of water? Well, I went and bought this before I came here. That was $1.99 at the store, okay? If you fill this with water out of the tap, that's 2.4 cents. It's a substantial difference, and that includes the sewer charge, all right? So a couple things. We encourage everyone to use town water. It is substantially cheaper, but also, it's also a better quality. You may have read recently where there was a big recall on bottled water because it had arsenic in it. Our water's treated in accordance with both state and federal guidelines, and so you get a much better quality for your water and much safer drinking water. The, talked about that. There was a period back over the past 18, 19 years where we used, we had a huge reserve in water and sewer. We used that reserve to balance the budget. That was probably the wrong thing to do with the capital projects before us. That was unfortunately not my recommendation, but it was, it is what it is. The MWRA water assessment is 46% of the budget, and the, on the suicide, it's 77% of the budget. The one thing I want to talk about is you see here a quarterly service charge. We had a service charge, as you read in the memo, back in 2006. It was done away with in 2007 by the Board of Selectmen at the time. Was not our recommendation. We recommend that there should be a service charge. Majority of towns, I'd say, have a service charge. If not, I wouldn't say all, but I'd say it's, the percentage is up pretty high. Why do you want a service charge? Well, if you look at the water budget, the assessment to the MWRA is based on last year's calendar's consumption. So we've already used that water, and that's what they base their assessment on. All of the testing, all of the regulations need to be complied with in the course of a year. So let's say we don't pump one drop of water from July 1st on. We're still going to spend 90% of our budget, okay? On the suicide, that assessment, which is 77% of that budget, is a, done on a three-year average with a formula that's very complex. And so if we did not send any sewage down the system, we would spend probably 90 to 95% of that budget. So the budget is basically fixed cost. This gets back to where we have a service charge to, that is set, that covers part of that. If I go out, if we don't pump any water, is there a cost associated with each residence or each business? Yes. We still have to read meters. We still have to flush the system. We still have to do a whole host of regulatory things and billing and a number of other items that are required to be done. So we're still going to spend that money. There's still a cost there. So we recommend that those service charges be put back in place. The, when we calculated it and we reviewed it, the advisory board obviously is the one making this recommendation as required in their policy of what they're responsible for. We looked at it that, and so the end-of-the-year reserve that we would generate or the positive balance for the year would be the same whether we had a, one system or the other. So we tried to hit that same mark, so it doesn't go up or down one way or the other. If you look at the page, if you look at page six, the blue column in page six shows our existing rate. And then the next columns over show you a number of different scenarios. The water would go to an $18 service charge in $7.30, which is the third column. It will provide a year-end projected earnings of $40,000. That year-end projected earnings has to be in the positive. If it is not, it will come out of the tax levy, or it would have to be borrowed, and then you'd have to increase rates next year to cover that. Then down the bottom, you'll see what we estimate for a year-end projected water reserve balance at the end of fiscal year 20. Sewer works the same way. One thing that's different on the suicide, the water rate still went up 10 cents. On the suicide, the sewer rate actually went from, with the $20 service charge, went from $1.35 down to $1.20. And with, see if I had any other, anything else I wanted to mention. With that, any questions you have? Be glad to answer.
Any questions of the council preliminarily? We don't have a motion yet. Any questions, though? Counselor Chines, of course.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and the analysis that went with this as well. Just a couple of questions. First, on the sewer side, I was wondering if you could speak about the trade-off between the service fee and the rate increase. So as you note, you actually have the rate coming down from 11.35 down to 11.20 with the $20 service fee increment. Is there any sort of logic behind having the service fee at that level versus something lower than that and maintaining the same rate? Or how did you think about that calculation?
Remember that the budget's fixed. So what we said at town meeting, we have to generate revenue for. So whether the, you picked no service charge or you picked a lower service charge, you have to raise the same amount of money. So that rate would go up if you lower the service charge. And I'll give you an example.
Mr. Smith, if I could interrupt for a second, Mr. Smith. And I understand that dynamic. I guess I'm asking as to, you know, you could have also said maintain the 11.35 rate and have a $15 service fee or however the math works out. I guess I'm asking for that question.
We use the service charge rates we had in place in 2006.
Okay. So there wasn't any sort of magic to 20 versus another number? Okay. Second question I wanted to ask on the water side. So we, you know, we have obviously less last year, but you know, we have historically pulled water out of Crystal Lake as part of the water supply. Over the long term, is there an opportunity to leverage more of the water in Crystal Lake in lieu of using MWRA? And if so, sort of what are the cost implications of doing that?
The first, the second part, the costs are much lower than the MWRA. We are limited by our withdrawal permit to 211 million gallons a year. Now, the question is, can we reach that level? The way we operate and the type of system we have, we cannot reach 211 million gallons a year. Realistically, we could probably get to 180 million gallons, which we try to reach. And the reasons we can't reach that level is having a slow sand filtration system. We have to take that down during the course of the year, and we need to clean out the sand filters. As you remember at town meeting, we asked for money to replace the sand media. And so the, we do that twice a year. If we were to increase higher on usage, we would have to increase the amount of downtime also associated with that for cleaning. Because the more you pump through the system, the more material that's there that needs to be cleaned up. So realistic numbers, 180 million. We've hit that a number of times. We've had some kind of unique things happen this year with the manganese, which is unusual. So hopefully, what's going to happen is this year, we'll hit 180 million gallons. So the assessment, unless the MWRA does something crazy, should go down hopefully next year and decrease. And we've seen that happen before. Probably five or six years ago, we had a spike in using their water, and that caused us to, the rate went up, and then it went back down to cover that. So we cannot get rid of Crystal Lake by regulation. We have to keep that as a supply. So there are things we could do, but we could, it would always have to be available for supply.
And presumably, if we didn't have Crystal Lake, our rates would actually be higher because of the higher cost of getting water from MWRA.
Also, the benefit of Crystal Lake, which I don't think most people know, we have really four different sources to supply water to the town of Wakefield, which is very unusual and very, is very beneficial to the town. We take water from the MWRA on Melrose side. We take water on Albion Street, and we take water on Prospect Street, which is brand-new. We put in with them last year. We also have Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake, if we need to, and we've done this once before, can supply the entire town for a short duration, most likely a couple weeks. And we did that when the MWRA lost that major pipe and they were worried about contamination. We just shut them off completely. And we pumped around the clock from Crystal Lake.
Great. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Comments? Counselor DiNaco.
Thank you, Ms. J. Rick, thank you for the presentation. A question. Over
Over the years, you've always told us that it costs us money if we don't drink the water.
That's true.
Okay? And I do remember you saying that, year in and year out. You mentioned the fire and the massive use of water that we had. Did that, do you think that next year, that's going to offset the numbers that you're going to see because there was that massive?
It, as long as you don't have another fire, absolutely. It'll, it'll drop what we use in general for the entire town.
And would that lower the MWRA fee somehow?
Yes.
Correct? So that last, large amount of money, of water that we used to put out that fire, will actually benefit us slightly?
Correct.
Next year, not this year?
Correct.
So even though we're trying to conserve water, it's nice to use the water as well, too. So my question is on this now, that if we're wanting people to use more water, what would be the option be of the second meters, to get people to use more water?
Well, I've got that to talk about.
Okay, that's not part of?
That's not part of it.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
So following on, on water conservation, and I have to tell you, I sit here uncomfortable every year, saying, you know, use more water instead of conserve more water. But in the memo on the, on the second meters, but not directly related, is every water supplier has to meet a less than sixty-five gallons a day per person
Yes.
threshold. And the hundred or so-plus water suppliers who do not meet that standard, presumably including us in two thousand and eighteen, are subject to compliance and conservation plans and enforcement from the Mass DEP. What is that costing us?
Right now, nothing. I think if it continued on for a number of years, it would be. But if you're working to control that, they don't look at that at all, so.
So I guess that's, I have a little cognitive dissonance over this, because we're telling people to use lots of water, but at the same time, we're trying to, to reach this regulatory goal of sixty-five gallons per day, so I
And remember, that sixty-five gallons per day included that
I'm sorry, per, per
Per person, per day.
Per person, per day.
Included that fire.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand.
It includes when we flush the system, when we, we have a fire of a major, major fire, and it could, a major water break, same thing is included in that number.
So, but I guess I still see that, you know, there, there needs to be some work towards kind of conservation, as well as balancing with this commodity aspect of water, so. And I don't really expect an answer, I just wanted to say it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on that topic, can I
Counselor Chines, yes.
So if I'm understanding the, sort of the dynamics of how MWRA sets the rates correctly, it's, it's not so much that we have an incentive to use more water. It may seem that way in this year because, basically, our assessment for the year has been set, that's already done. But presumably, if we as a community still use less water year over year, that does decrease our assessment in the following year, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly. I know that may affect the rate, but in terms of
Well, yeah.
the raw dollars that we're spending, wouldn't that still go down next year and the year after?
Yes and no. The, remember, the MWRA has to generate also a certain amount of revenue. And they are in, been doing a lot of major capital work, at billions of dollars. So that capital work is a higher percentage of their budget than the operating portion of it. So you're going to still pay that percentage. It's still going to be up there. It will drop a little, but it's not going to, there's not a comparison thing where it drops
Yeah. So it wouldn't be one for one, because similar to our issue, I mean, there's a certain level of infrastructure that you have to maintain regardless of
Correct.
how much water you're flowing through the system.
Correct.
But with that being said, there still should be some benefit to sort of the variable cost of the water that we purchase next year, and the year after, and the year after.
Right. But it's not going to drop what you would, most people would think. It's going to be a lot smaller.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So I know we have five votes. Should we take them one by one, Mr. Malin? Would that make the most sense?
Yes.
Okay. And do we need a roll call for this, or is it simple?
No, no.
All right. All right, so I will entertain a motion then, relative to
Public comment.
I'm sorry, any public comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for setting the water rates for fiscal year 2020 at seven dollars and thirty cents, and a service charge of eighteen dollars per quarter.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Dacco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing unanimous vote of seven-zero, the motion passes. We'll move on to sewer.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Oh!
I'll go ahead and do that next, then.
Yeah.
Do you have anything further to say on sewer?
Oh, no.
No, all right. So I will entertain a motion regarding setting the sewer rates.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to set the sewer rate at eleven twenty per hundred cubic feet for fiscal year 2020, with a service charge of twenty dollars per quarter.
Second.
And do we have any public comment on sewer rates? Any discussion by members of the body? Okay, seeing none. The motion on the floor is the setting of the sewer rate at eleven dollars and twenty cents, and with a service charge of twenty dollars per quarter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven-zero, unanimous, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a comment, so you understand what this one is. The sewer flat rate, we have about a hundred customers that use well water for their domestic water supply. We either charge them, we will supply a meter to bill the sewer portion, similar to as we do with all the other customers in town. Those that decide not to do that, we charge a, the sewer flat rate, which is calculated by using the average consumption of twelve thousand cubic feet a year, times the rate. So they're paying, in many cases, they would be better off to put a meter on the well that they use, because they could be paying more money than, than they're supposed to. There are a couple cases where it would be substantial cost to the homeowner to do that, because they'd need a pumping and all that stuff because of the elevations. But for the most part, it's, it's wells that we don't have a meter on, or in all the cases.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion relative to the sewer flat rates.
I move that we set the sewer flat rate at three hundred and fifty-six dollars per quarter, or three hundred and twenty dollars per forty cents, after the discount.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Santos, motion seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? So the motion before you is the flat rate of three fifty-six per quarter, or three twenty forty after discount, based on recommended sewer rates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven-zero, the motion passes.
The septic disposal rate, there is no change in the formula. It's the same formula as last year. And what we use that for is, and we may get one customer a year, but we have a, we are required to have a location where if you have a trailer, or, or, I shouldn't say, a mobile home or something, and you need to dump yours, sewerage, we need to have a place in town for you to do that, there are other places you can go. And we probably get maybe one or two customers a year that that happens with.
Any public comment on the septic disposal rates? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion relative to the septic disposal rate.
I move that we set the septic disposal rate at a hundred and ten dollars, a hundred and ten dollars per delivery, which is the same as fiscal year 2019.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dacco. The motion before you is, or before that, any discussion? The motion before you is setting the septic disposal rate at the same as fiscal year 2019, at one hundred and ten dollars per delivery. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven-zero, the motion passes.
Okay, the last one is a fee that you adopted, I believe, last year or the year before. And that fee is, as we are changing out meters, or if we have to get manual reads and they will not, or es, to estimates, they won't let us in, we have the ability to charge fifty dollars per billing quarter for that. As of this date, we have not had to use that. People have been pretty cooperative, but it does help us get the meters replaced and, and get new meters in.
Is there any public comments on the meter fee? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion relative to the meter fee.
I move that we set the meter fee for manual reading at fifty dollars, same as fiscal year 2019, with the understanding that it has not been, hasn't had to been used yet. Is that correct? Good incentive.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dacco. Any discussion? The motion before you, relative to the meter fees, would be maintaining the same fifty-dollar fee as fiscal year 2019 into 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing unanimous vote of seven-zero, the motion passes.
Okay, the next one is the water and sewer fees that you have a memo on. And it relates to mostly one-time fees that are charged for development, expansion, and you have that in your package. We have not increased those since the early nineteen nineties. We've reviewed those. We've also looked at what our costs are, but also what other communities are charging. And you have a, page two gives you what you would be looking to vote. And then you have the correspondence from the town, from a town engineer to the advisory board. Advisory board did vote to adopt these, and make that recommendation. And so you have a chart of what other communities are charging. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Reno, my town engineer, to talk about that.
Sure. Yeah, so essentially, these new fees are for, for any project that would place a new burden on either the water or sewer system. So there has to be an increase, either in demand for water on the water side, or, you know, or inflow into the, into the sewer system. This will not affect, you know, your average homeowner on any of their projects that they needed to, to, you know, renew their service, either water or sewer. This is just intended only for, for development, and to cover that. And this is consistent with many of our peer communities. We've kind of picked the median prices for what other communities are doing. You'll notice in there, in the charts that we provided in the packet, that there really isn't a, a one-to-one comparison on how other communities have handled this. I think in, in each of the cases, you'll see one community really as an outlier, I make sure to include one of those. Wilmington on the water side is very high for some of their water connections, and then Woburn for the sewer side, for how they calculate their, you know, their sewer connection fees. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on these one-time fees.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So essentially, we're going from a fifty-dollar, either residential, or commercial, or industrial connection to a five hundred dollar.
Correct.
So we're jumping it from fifty to five hundred.
Yeah, and if you, if you review the, the, the chart that's in there, that's pretty much in the median of what other communities are charging.
Yeah, I see that. So I guess I have a bit of a question. So we just raised, with service charges, we just raised essentially a hundred and fifty-two dollars a year for residential payers. And I guess I'm just wondering, kind of, the thinking, similar to Counselor Chines, was the thinking, and it says that the purpose of the higher connection fees is also for maintenance, so presumably, not just maintenance around the development, but maintenance of the whole system. So are both, both increases, you know, are we that much of a shortfall that we need both increases? And what was the thinking behind that?
One, yes.
Okay.
But two, remember, these are completely separate issues. So if you live in a house, and you don't change anything that would impact the system, or if you, you're not even going to see these fees.
The five hundred dollar fees.
Any of the fees on
We're going to see the hundred and fifty-two dollar fees that we just, the new service charge fees.
The new service charge, right. But these fees here are really for development that comes about, really for impacts to the water and sewer system that really tax the system. Okay? So they don't impact residents, per se, they don't impact businesses, unless you do a substantial change.
I understand that the five hundred dollars won't impact. I guess I'm just saying it's all one pool of money to maintain the system.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Santos.
We're always hesitant to raise fees. However, we also have, because of that, decades go, go past us without us raising fees in a lot of different areas, since I've been on the board. And in the early nineties, we were not having the type of development we're having today. So I think it does make sense for us to be in the median. I would be uncomfortable if we were much higher than our neighbor, surrounding neighbors. But with some of these developments going on, on the edges of other communities, but us impacting our water and sewer, I understand why these make sense, at this point.
Counselor Dacco.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, so Rick, just real quick, off the top of your head, how many miles of sewer lines and water lines do we have?
We have ninety-five miles of sewer line, a hundred and ten miles of water line, approximately.
So most of the INI fee that we currently take in from subdivision control laws are zoning developments, where they're putting in multiple condominiums or apartments, correct?
Correct.
And the INI fee that you use at that point is used to inspect any and all pipes within the town that may be impacted by that development, and elsewhere.
And elsewhere.
And elsewhere. And the fee you, prior to, what was the high, the low end fee per unit, housing unit, do you remember? Prior to this increase?
I'm not following your question.
You're making a five hundred per new connection, so that's five hundred per new dwelling.
Currently, it's fifty.
What was the, what's the current one before this increase?
Fifty, fifty dollars.
No, the II fee is
Oh, the II fee, that's four fifty, we're keeping that the same, four fifty.
You're keeping the four, II fee still four fifty.
Yeah, the II fee, basically, that's more of a semantic issue, because what we find with the developers, if they're not doing a residential change, they, the calculation is not done as a gallon per day, it's done more as a bedroom. So, you know, if we, if there's not a bedroom as part of that development, then, you know, there's been some, some discussions and confusion with the developments coming in. So that's just really to clarify for, for people applying.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you. Just to help me understand, I think somewhat in connection with Counselor Smith-Galvin's question, and somewhat just as education, I think, on my part, as to what goes in, you know, what goes into connecting a, a new residence, but what is the work that's sort of undertaken from a water and sewer standpoint? So as we think about that five hundred dollar sewer connection fee, or the water connection fee, like, effectively, what is the scope of work that we're doing that justifies that fee?
First, the II fee is a fee that's been in place for at least twenty, oh, thirty years. The, and that fee is used to remove flows out of the sewer system that should not be there. They could come from, you have a sump pump in your house, remember that sump pump that you dump, if you're dumping it into the sewer system, is increasing the sewer rate. If you have cracked pipes, sewer pipes, water gets in there, that's increasing the sewer rate. So this, and if you have roof drains, and that's tied into the sewer system, that's increasing the rate. This money, we work on repairing pipe, repairing basins, to reduce the amount of flow that is going into the system that should not be there. And with the goal that, if you reduce enough, it will turn around and reduce the rate at some point in time. We utilize the grants, if you remember at town meeting, we authorized utilization of the MWRI, MWRA II grants. I think the last, we did two the last time, each for one point two million, each allotment, which we have to use one before we can use the other, to do that. So that money also goes to helping reduce that. If you're building a new development or a new condo building, they are required to reduce an amount of flow that they're adding into the system. And so they can do it one of two ways. They can go out and do the work themselves, or they pay us the four fifty, and then we take on that responsibility, they don't have to worry about it.
So that's the II fee, but talk a little bit about the connection, the water and sewer connection fees.
The connection fees, there's, you know, there's stuff when we go out and do inspections, there are The connection fees, you know, there's stuff when we go out and do inspections, there are, there's work on the system to make upgrades to accommodate that. You know, they would still pay for the upgrade, but there's design and there's engineering that goes into that. They are not able to do those things themselves because they don't know how the system necessarily works, or all the components of the system. And it just covers a huge number of operating things that it would go towards.
Great, thank you. Further questions or comments? One question I have is, if we don't increase these fees, what sort of impact would that have on our current taxpayers? Because we're talking, this is about essentially new construction. So what, is it just a matter of, you know, help me understand the order of magnitude? Obviously, it's four-hundred and fifty dollars more per project.
Right. The, it's per project. So if you look at all these fees and you look at everybody here and in this room, if you're not going to do a major, a new building or a major impact, it's not going to impact you at all.
If I may, we sat down and had a long conversation about, excuse me, the lifecycle maintenance piece to the roadway project. This thinking aligns very similar with that. So to put it simply, a residential service, screwing a piece of brass or copper into a pipe in the street, a major development, they're literally severing what we have in the road and conducting new, which is going to lower the life expectancy on our infrastructure. So what this is doing is taking these fees and allowing us to apply it somewhere else. Between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred dollars a foot to contract somebody to replace water main. So at fifty dollars a development, you need four developments before you can get into a business a foot. So this just kind of brings us up at the times. When we brought Bill in and interviewed him, we referenced this in the interview. It references Bell Atlantic as the telephone provider in town, so it's been a little while. So we're trying to catch up with years of, I don't want to call it deferred maintenance, but that's what it resulted in.
I guess what I'm getting at is, if we don't do this, does it mean ultimately that there's a more of a tax burden on our, on our current taxpayers? And it sounds like the answer would be yes.
Yes, correct.
Yes, and because this is really more prospective, this is looking at any new developments and the fees associated with that. So I think for that reason, while I'm not a fan of increasing fees generally, I think there's also a cost to the current taxpayer by not increasing the fees. And, you know, for that reason, I will be in support of the request. Any further comment or questions? Okay, so seeing, any public comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to increase the sanitary sewer connection fee to five-hundred dollars, or I'll entertain a motion to increase the fee.
I'll move.
Second. And the amount of five-hundred dollars?
The amount of five-hundred dollars, yeah.
Second. So moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Discussion? Okay, seeing none before you, the motion is to increase the sanitary sewer fees, connection fee, to five-hundred dollars for new connections only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven zero, pass, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Second meters. I gave, I provided you with a memo on second meters?
Would you be willing to vote on water tapping fees?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yep.
So I will also entertain a motion, first off, any public comment on the water tapping fees? Seeing none, I'll also entertain a motion relative to the water tapping fees.
I move to set the water tapping fees according to the schedule recommended by Department of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the setting of water tapping fees pursuant to the Department of Public Works recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing unanimous vote of seven zero, the motion passes.
Okay, second meters, thank you. The, you have a memo that we provided on second water meters. The previous memo, which was of June 2015, provided that it would be looked at again in 2019. The advisory board looked at it and they voted to continue with the existing policy, which is a moratorium on second meters, and recommend that to you, and to kind of stay with the status quo. And the other point of their recommendation was that this be reviewed again in 2022. The second meters has been reviewed about fourteen times since 1990s. It was set and put in place by the, when we had a Board of Public Works, and it was done to, for a number of reasons, of which I cited a whole bunch of them in the, in the policy that's here, or in the, not policy, but in the memo. But the advisory board, as similar to last year, voted to, if you decide that you want to have second meters, what is needed? And there's a thirteen items that are needed to implement that. You could not, if you're going to implement second meters, and I'll have meter number one, I promise you that. So the, you would need to do those thirteen items, and so you would be looking at next year to do that, because it will take time to, you'll have to go to town meeting to raise money and put everything in place and figure out all those steps. Change the billing system, there's a whole host of items. And the big one is, if you change, we really need to do a cost of service and rate study, because if you mess up on selecting that rate, and it's very easy to do, because you don't know what the change is going to do, you would not have sufficient funding for the sewer system. The water, the consumption used for water, and I think this is important to realize, the consumption, we use that, it's just a means of billing. At the end of the day, if you went with a second meter, is our cost for the sewer system that we appropriated at town meeting going to go down? Absolutely not. It's going to stay exactly the same. So the consumption's used to kind of fairly calculate that. There are no sewer meters for resident, residential homes, and it would cost millions and millions of dollars to install if they did exist. The, so the second meter is a means, or the water consumption's a means to calculate that and generate that kind of a fair system. And it looks at all the different aspects with that. The, the other point I wanted to make is that, and everyone always asks, why is sewer more than water? We generate about one-point-nine-four million gallons of water a year that we, or per day, one-point-nine-four million gallons per day, which comes out to between six-hundred-and-fifty million to seven-hundred million gallons a year. The, on the sewer side, our sewer flow to the MWR is four-point-nine-seven million gallons. What does that mean? People are using sump pumps, people are using, if there are cracks in pipes, if they're tied in with roof drains. It also means there's a lot of extraneous flow that you cannot calculate. So let's say we had a second meter. We then, is that realistically charging people? No, because if you go home and you have a bottle of Diet Coke and you dump that down the sewer, into the sewer system, into the, into your sink, where does that get captured? There are a lot of things that, the food that you bring into the house, and if you use a garbage disposal, and that goes down into the sewer system, that doesn't get captured. So you can never have a system that's going to turn around and do it kind of fairly or appropriately, unless you had a meter on that system, which you can't do. So it's just a means, the way we do it's a means to calculate what is a fair cost to everyone, okay?
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments relative to the second meter? Vice Chair Santos.
As someone who probably would benefit from a second meter, as owner of a sprinkler system, I would still vote against it every single time it came before me, because I don't expect my neighbors to pay for my sprinkler system, which is ultimately what would happen, I think. You would have people paying for those who got second meters. So for all the reasons in the excellent memo detailed by the advisory committee, supported by what you said, it's, again, I'll be voting against the second meters.
For the comments or questions? Is there a reason that it had to be through 2022?
No, it's just an arbitrary date.
So it potentially could be reviewed again next year, for example?
It could, yeah.
Further questions or comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. So I will entertain a motion of a duration to be so moved, in terms of how long we may consider not having.
Jim, I'll make a motion that we be in agreement with the advisory board of public works' recommendation to not recommend the change in the current second meter moratorium policy and to extend the recommendation to, again, be reviewed in 2022.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that? One thought I would have is, I don't know that it's necessary for us to extend it as long as 2022 before revisiting it, but if that's the will of this body, then we'll vote accordingly. All right. So the motion before you is the extension of the prohibition of the second meter, second water meter through 2022, as recommended by the advisory board of public works. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so the motion passes six to one, and I was the only, no vote.
Okay, we'll see you in a little bit. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number eight is constituent issues. You recall, this is the opportunity for councilors to raise any issues that they have, reporting issues that have been raised by constituents that have not been included on the current agenda, but may be included on the future agenda with no votes being taken this evening. Does anyone have any constituent issues this evening? Counselor Dinaco.
Just one. Over the course of the last six or seven days, I've been downtown a little bit more than I normally have. There's been an uptick in panhandling from a number of individuals that are currently downtown. On my approach to public kitchen, I was approached by two before I got to the front door, and on leaving public kitchen, I was approached by one before I go back to my car. This is all in one night. This is just firsthand knowledge, and I've seen others, and I've had in conversations with a number of merchants, and it's the same in front of their businesses on and off. I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do about panhandling. It's been an aged, long discussion. I know that we brought this up at many meetings in the past, but I don't know how do you, how do we address that? We were trying to make the downtown more presentable to people to come into our downtown, but for them to be approached by these individuals always, it used to be, do you have change? Then it went, do you have a buck? Then it went to, do you have two bucks? There was one that used to be in Wakefield that was actually standing in front of a restaurant, can you buy me a meal? Okay, so where does it start on our behalf? Okay, that we have to not worry about that, or have the citizens that come into this town try to benefit to the downtown, to have to have that happen to them? I mean, is it something that we even do or can do or want to do? So that's my only comments on this. And thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, okay, thank you, Counselor Dinaco. Moving on to item number nine of chairman's comments, there are two things that I wanted to just update the council on this evening and the community as well. One is the Envision Wakefield project. We had our most recent focus group earlier this month, and we had a very good turnout for that, and a lot of really good ideas that came from that. And in fact, there are a series of five videos that we showcased last time that were actually adjusted and revised based upon the feedback that was received. I think the focus group was on a Friday, and they were revised over the weekend, and by Monday, we had that input incorporated into it, which I think is a very, very positive thing. We also had our fourth public forum that took place back on the eighteenth, that was well-attended, approximately sixty people had attended, and it, the updates there were mostly centered around phase two, and the way budgeting works with our town, phase two technically begins as of July one, 2019, for fiscal year 2020. We had a number of town representatives from DPW, as well as, thank you, Mr. Mayo, and the engineers from VHB have a preliminary meeting with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and that was in advance of the fourth public forum. That was just a preliminary meeting to talk about the concept. It was well-received. The details certainly are still to be hammered out, as you've heard many times already. But at this point, we are doing what we can to move the project forward at a pace that is as aggressive as we can, but ensuring that throughout we have the public participation and input, which is going to shape the project into its final form. And I think we will see, now, the videos that are on the website stay on there, all four of the public forums are available online, all five of the videos describing the concepts for the five different segmented portions of the downtown revitalization are also online as well. As far as the next public meeting, that will be largely dependent upon the kind of progress that is made with VHB, our design firm, and seeing where they're at. And at the appropriate time, we'll give sufficient notice to make sure that we continue to engage the public. It's been a project that has had tremendous public engagement, which has been great. And in fact, we, in the design phase, are paying more than a lot of other communities do because of the extent of the outreach that we're doing. We're having more meetings, we're engaging VHB, the firm, more to make sure that every, you know, comment is considered, you know, every idea is considered and fleshed out. So that's where we stand with that. If anyone had any comments or questions on Envision Wakefield, can offer those now. If not, we can move on. All right. And the next update I wanted to provide is with respect to the Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee. That committee met back on June thirteenth. That committee is hard at work, and it's really focused on four areas. Members of the committee have looked at any possible alternative sites for a public safety building, looking at the building's scope and how that could potentially be modified, looking at the priorities and functionality and ranking them from the perspective of ensuring that we maintain the public safety building to the highest standards, and also looking at funding sources. And that's a significant piece to this, because we heard and are responding to what the residents had to say when this issue first became, came before the residents. And we are doing as much due diligence as you can imagine to make sure that we are exhausting every opportunity for funding, for alternative sites, for how we can reconfigure the building and how we can perhaps modify the design. I will say, one of the more important things that came out from that meeting, and again, with new leadership, with, through Chief Scory, we were able to have, open up new dialogue relative to this, and he explained, as did some of the others in leadership in the department, that the design of the building as it has currently stood allows for expansion to a department of approximately sixty police officers. And right now, I believe, we're at forty-eight, there, forty-seven to forty-eight. So that allows for, the design that had been previously presented allows for sixty. So there is room to grow there, despite the fact that the footprint is rather small. But we're looking at everything, and we're looking to make sure that we do what is right for the building and what's right for the community. Some of you may know, many may not, that this past Saturday, we had an issue where we lost power at the public safety building. And we also had the backup generator fail. I spoke with Mr. Mayo throughout the day. I spoke with Chief Scori throughout the day. We had a EMLAC, a command center that was available. In essence, it's a Winnebago trailer that can set up in our parking lot. But we were without radios, as it was reported to me, and without telephones for about 30 minutes. We did have 911 service. We had battery backup for that, so that was never compromised. But it did underscore the fact that there are a number of issues that we have to be looking at with the public safety building, and these issues are not going away. And any opportunity that we have to try to make sure we're preserving the public safety is something that we have to do. And so as a community, we are moving forward with, again, looking at every alternative to see what might be the best fit for us and for our budgetary constraints. The hope of this committee is that we'll have some sort of recommendations to bring before the town at town fall meeting. And as we, as this project, in whatever form it takes, gets delayed, costs continue to increase. And those are real considerations for us because we need to be ever mindful of that piece. We don't want to be paying a premium to end up with something because of the delay of time. And obviously, safety is the number one priority there. So with that, I'll answer any questions or comments you may have. All right.
One comment.
Counselor Butt, yes.
Just to clarify, when you were using "we" saying that, and I thank you for the overview, but you were speaking on behalf of the Public Safety Reassessment with the goal to bring it to fall town meeting?
That's correct.
I'm assuming it'll come in front of the council before it goes to fall meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
So I just, I just need you to just be clear about the "we" because most of us didn't go to the, like, you're the liaison to the public safety assessment, so it would come back here before it goes to town meeting.
I mean, it'll, there will be, there will be public forums. It'll come back before here. I guess the broad schedule, I'd say that is to, the target is fall town meeting. But absolutely, there are a number of steps, Counselor Butt, you're absolutely correct, that get us there, including us.
And all meeting materials online on the website? Is there a committee website?
I know that the minutes are available online. I don't know that we have a specific committee website. I don't, I don't believe so. No, no on that. Mr. Mayo, is there anything you wanted to add? I know your focus had been primarily on the funding sources aspect of it.
Right. We did, had heard from the community that another city close to us received a large influx of money. They did seem to work through a lobbyist to look at that through Mass Works, and we're going to look at that same option as well. Huge, like, almost half the project. They did buy some land as part of that, so there may be a nexus there, but we are looking at that issue.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. So we're moving on into item number 10, licenses and permits. We have a request for a one-day liquor license, and this is requested by Oyu Palm Zivon, and it's for a one-day liquor license for a private event at the Americal Civic Center on July 21, 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All right. The motion before you then is the granting of a one-day liquor license at the Americal Civic Center on July 21, 2019. All those in favor? Seeing a vote of seven to zero. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is liaison updates. Earlier this spring, everyone on this body was assigned at least one liaison role, and part of our goal for this year is to make sure that we keep everyone, especially the community, apprised of what has been going on relative to the various departments and other entities in town. Perhaps we could start first with fire. Vice Chair Santos?
So I have been in communication with Chief Sullivan, with Gary Hill. Steve, what is Gary's title?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, I think. Lieutenant Gary Hill, who is intricately tied with the ambulance contract that's coming up for renewal. So we've been discussing, looking at other contracts. I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away from that, but just was talking to the firefighters about what they think we could have more robust contract, perhaps, moving forward on that. Deputy chief position, going forward for a 2020 timeline, working on getting an assessment center. So, yeah, great things are happening at the fire department. They, the firefighter memorial we had a couple of years, weeks ago, was a beautiful ceremony as well, so, all good.
Great. Thank you. Social services would be Counselor Butt.
Sure. So just a couple of updates. I checked in with the groups that I liaison with. So the Council of Aijeng is starting age-friendly Wakefield as their theme this summer. So they're having a couple of programs that are open for everyone. So they encourage everyone to go, bring children, grandchildren. July 22nd and 29th, they'll have art classes. And July 23rd and August 20th, they'll have mindful crafting classes. As most folks know, the library was working on their strategic plan. It was submitted. It was finalized and submitted. So congratulate Catherine and her team for finishing that up. She also wants to remind everyone Plaza Jazz starts July 11th, every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library. And then finally, one of the new liaisons that I have this year is with Arts and Culture in the ACE building. They, a couple of years ago, in the state budget, we actually got some money to work on renovations in that building, and the bid package has been submitted, is my understanding. Close to, almost.
Close to.
I have not seen it yet, Steve, but I'm--
We need a stamp plan from the architect.
We are looking forward to seeing that proposal, and then the leadership at ACE will be meeting with the architect and DPW in the next couple of weeks. So look forward to some, those renovations finally beginning. It's been a long process, and we're looking forward to the building being upgraded. Those are my updates.
Thank you. Counselor Chines, schools?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know School Committee Chair Chris Callanan is here, so if I get anything wrong, Chris, please jump in and correct me. I, you know, have spent some time with Superintendent Lyons, and a couple of things that I want to update folks on. The first is that there is a high school working group in formation. School Committee member Tom Markham is leading the effort to frame out really sort of the scope and the charge for that group and how they'll organize their work. And my understanding is that there'll be a plan formulated around the time of the August meeting of the school committee. Couple of new hires in the school department. We have a new assistant principal at the Galvin, Allison Hammer, who comes to us from Bedford. Matt Carter, who currently serves as the Wakefield Academy Director, will be taking over as the interim principal at Woodville, and I know someone who's recently come to the Wakefield School Department but has been really well-regarded in his time here. So exciting news for the Woodville community. Couple of positions they're recruiting for, a replacement for Matt Carter's position as the Wakefield Academy Director and various other things, and also business administrator. Some contracts, the seven bargaining units for the school department are, those contracts are up for renewal. My understanding from Superintendent Lyons is that they anticipate voting on four of those seven contracts in tomorrow's school committee meeting. The other three negotiations are ongoing there. And then finally, I did ask Superintendent Lyons today about the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings that many people have seen, and certainly for folks that are on social media caused a bit of robust discussion. Asked him if he could share with us, and I know he'll share with the school committee and others as well, sort of his thoughts on where there are opportunities for Wakefield to improve, but also how we put the results in context. And I think the reason for that is we want to make sure, as we think about our improvement plans, we're investing in those areas that, you know, improve the quality of education in the Wakefield, and hopefully also having an impact on the rankings rather than just, you know, trying to sort of increase the statistics that go into the rankings without actually improving the quality of education. I know a couple of areas that he's talked about include the sciences, both at the elementary level and high school, as well as middle school math is some areas of focus. So some work coming there, and when I get sort of the full analysis of those reports, I'll bring them back to this body. Thank you.
I do think that is something that is part of a larger conversation, the idea of the rankings. And I do recognize that not one ranking is determinative. However, if you look at a number of rankings, I think Wakefield is not landing at a level that many would expect. And I think that parents and taxpayers have expectations that we do better. And I think that as a community, when you look at, I think we're number 96, and that was only in the greater Boston area, and included some schools in southern New Hampshire that followed behind us. From the taxpayer perspective, they want excellence. And when you look at what our cost per pupil, I think that's something that is important. I'm not in the school committee. We're not the school committee, but we do represent the taxpayers. And the school represents a significant portion of our overall budget. When you figure in, you know, all of the benefits, you know, we're looking at nearly half of every tax dollar goes to the schools. So we want to make sure that I see every taxpayer in that regard as an investor, and I want to make sure that we are careful stewards of those funds because we want to keep people in support of the schools. And anything that we can do to make sure that we're outperforming a number of other schools, that I'm confident we can, I think is an important piece. And, you know, if you look at that ranking, I know Counselor Chines, you and I had the chance to talk about it this morning. There are a lot of schools that, a lot of people feel like we should have been before for a number of reasons. And so I hope that that, this is just the beginning of a broader discussion. And again, I'll defer to the school committee at first glance, but it is a town-wide issue ultimately, and it's a taxpayer issue ultimately. So I want to make sure that we're making the right strategic decisions to, as you say, make sure we have the best education for the children, but also do it in a way that presents this town in a very favorable light in comparison to a lot of other competitor communities. Thank you. DPW's Counselor May.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had my first tour of the DPW facility, which I was a little alarmed at. So I won't get into all my details, but it makes the safety building look great. It was built in 1937. Technically, I think it's called the Richese Bouliette?
Yes.
Okay. Works facility. So I worked in insurance during the day. I'm not a loss control expert, but I spent almost two hours there. And one after another, I have like 15, 16, 18 items that are really things we should look into. Just some highlights. There's no more painting inside due to fumes. The paint facility doesn't exist. When it did, the fumes just go to the old middle school, which caused other problems. Some of the vacuations from right here. Stairs need repairing, and some of that is part of that $500,000 funding that the town meeting and we agreed to for floor engineering at the facility as well. There's a sinking floor there as well. Came up early about the middle school. Again, the buildings, I think they're all 1937. Repair facility, again, the lifts are dangerous. They should have clear walkways that are not clear. The storage facilities that should be just for electrical, but there's also chemicals stored there. I mean, it's really, I commend the DPW for doing a great job. I'm excited that no one's been hurt. But I think that my take is that there's way too many hazardous situations there, and we need to have someone get a benchmark, just take a look and see where we are right now. But I'm sure we won't be building a new facility anytime soon. We have a lot of things on our plate, but there's leaking roofs, mold. They have a rodent problem they're taking care of. So it goes on and on, but it's, I'm concerned about the health and safety first. And I think we need to get a baseline from a risk-control person to go in, show up money, and just tell us what their punch list is, because it needs to be addressed. And again, that was my first tour, and along the lines of that Gilligan's Island, right, the three-hour tour. I think we need to do that immediately, if not sooner. The folks there are doing a great job, but I think it's very dangerous. And just taking a tour, you should have a hard hat. So that's my quick take.
Any comments or questions? Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor, Mr. Snisson. A couple of questions. One is, I know one of the things we approved at town meeting was a study of the facility. And when you talk about sort of the risk assessment of the current facility, my assumption would be that some amount of that, that risk assessment would be included in the feasibility study for a new facility. Is that sort of correct, or would you see that as sort of a different process?
I think that could be, but that's obviously up to the permanent building committee.
Okay.
The funding that was there was to look at doing a new facility because it is needed. The, and also whether that facility would be at the existing site or another site. The, it was $500,000 that was appropriated. That is for emergency repairs only. There has been, in the '70s, there was some money spent on the facility. Basically, there's been really no money spent over the last, I don't know, 50-plus years. And the, with the exception of $100,000 allotment, which, to fix some items. So it's an old facility. As I say, I've written two memos, which some of you have gotten in the past. We also have the report for the joint facility at Reading. The, it was built in horse-and-buggy days, with horse-and-buggies. So can't make it any simpler than that.
No, and certainly, I mean, I had the opportunity, thanks to Mr. Snisson and Mr. Conway, to tour the facility probably a year or two ago on the finance committee, and would echo Counselor May's comments. My only other suggestion would be just as we, you know, given that we did also appropriate some money for emergency repairs, that we do bring back sort of that agenda item in front of the council at some point, just so we get a sense as to what that does get us in terms of those emergency repairs, what that addresses in your list of 18, 20 observations that you made, Counselor May, and sort of what are the remaining areas of deficiency, so that we really understand, you know, where our risk is for our community and the conditions that our DPW workers are working in. Excellent point, indeed.
Just to wrap that up, just a comment. So again, I think Rick Snisson, who I met with, as well as Joe Conway and Bill Renaud, are doing a great job. So no slight to you folks. It's just, I'm worried about you working with, what you're working with. There's this limitation of what you can do with the restrictions you have, and I think it's dangerous. A lot of those things we talked about, and I think I need to sound the alarm. Hopefully I did. Just because I don't have all the answers, but I think we should definitely address many of these items, if not all, as soon as we can. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Economic development, I know it's Vice Chair Santos and Counselor Dinoco. Counselor Dinoco, do you want to take that?
No, it doesn't. Right now, we haven't met yet on the liaison end of it because we're still trying to make sure that we have a charge, so to speak, set in place.
But we have had conversations with Mr. Mayor with regard to, you know, the priority is what we all think the priority should be, is to have an economic development person that could be the helm of a lot of these projects. We've talked about, you and I were both at Envision Wakefield, engaging with folks there and going to those meetings. So I think we should be having a meeting in the next couple of weeks to really set that in place and then talk in much more detail about, thinking about how do we get an economic development person to really bring all of these different ideas and programs and committees together.
Great. Thank you. Police, Counselor Dinoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity to sit down with Chief Scori, Deputy Chief Calabrese, and Lieutenant Roublay probably about a week ago. Had another tour of the facility on the, mostly on the second floor. One of the strongest issues right now is the moving forward of the reassessment of the public safety building. That was on most of their thoughts in regards to items of importance. Lieutenant Scori also mentioned that, ah, yeah, Chief Scori. It's been a long time. Get myself used to saying chief. He did mention that-- He did mention that is one of the items that he wants to see more is go back to the old-school way of having patrolmen walking the beats in the street again. So that would be a welcome sign for a lot of different issues. As we mentioned earlier, there are forty-seven budgeted positions on the force right now. I don't think they're all covered yet, but I think in due time, we'll work to getting to that number with a full staff of officers. We did touch on your fact of maximum capacity at that meeting too, and what it would take to facilitate having the room for all of a full complement of sixty. But there's work to be done, there is wish lists that are going to be created, I know that for sure, but with further meetings, I'll have something more to bring forward at that time.
Great, thank you. Counsel, yes, of course.
What you complained about happening in downtown to yourself with regard to being approached, I think that should go to the police department. I mean, when you said, what can we do? I think the police can engage with these people. There's nothing against asking someone for money or for help for a meal, but if we introduce resources to them, and especially if we have a walking beat, which I've been thinking is a great idea. I think that you get to know these folks and you get to maybe say, we have resources, we have certain kitchens, there are places you can go. So I think as liaison to the police department, that is a perfect place for you to take that concern.
Thank you.
Gas and Light, Counselor Smith Galvin.
Thank you. So I have been meeting with the Gas and Light Department, I've been attending their board meetings. So I think I mentioned they did a strategic retreat in April, and from that came a couple of priorities, including, as you can imagine, reliability and safety, customer service, cost rates, environmental sustainability and compliance. And they're taking kind of each issue at a board meeting. They recently discussed a lot of cybersecurity issues and collaboration with the town, which was really interesting to see those collaborations happening. I think they're doing energy efficiency in the upcoming meeting. I've also really been encouraged by their engagement with things like our municipal vulnerability preparedness workshops. They have been very active in our environmental sustainability committees and looking at greenhouse gas inventories. They met with Mr. Mayor and myself a couple of weeks ago, I guess now, really thinking through development in town and what their role and how they can encourage new developers to perhaps look at things like what we would call splits, which is highly efficient heating and air conditioning, using solar, making parking lots EV, electric vehicle ready, and so, and similar to what we just heard from the water and sewer, kind of what are interconnections and what are upgrades that are going to be needed around that. So they're very forward-thinking on that. Just two programs I want to mention. I may have already mentioned there is a new solar incentive that they have just launched, which essentially, when all of the money is expended, should double the amount of solar electricity households that we will have in Wakefield. There's currently about thirty, and this incentive program should fund about another thirty. I think they only have about sixty-eight subscribed right now, but it's an upfront rebate program. So if anybody's interested in that, certainly you should look at the WMGLD website. The other interesting thing we have in town is a battery storage. We're one of the first municipal utilities to have one, and there's going to be a battery system ribbon cutting on that at ten-thirty on July eighteenth. It's off of Farm Street. Doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot to see inside, but there'll be a lot of description of what's happening there, and it really is something to celebrate. Doesn't seem very sexy, kind of a battery sitting on a lot in Farm Street, but it really is a very good thing for Wakefield, so that's my report.
Thank you for that. And Counselor Smith Galvin and Counselor May, communications.
Let me take it.
Sure, sure, thank you.
So we have met with Jen McDonald, our communications manager for the town of Wakefield. She is doing great work, as I think we've said here probably numerous times in the past, working on a new website, some new branding work. And so we will be working with her to really just try to improve our communications to the general public and to the residents.
Great, thank you. All right, before we close out on this, any questions or comments on any of these updates?
I just wanted to, two seconds, I forgot, is the liaison to committees?
Yes.
Sounds like a Saturday Night Live skit. I reached out to every committee member of every committee that we appoint, letting them know when their term was up, if I had, if they had any questions that I could help them answer, walk them through a process, or just if they had concerns about their committees. So the committee to the liaison committees is also going strong.
And that's an important role, because I know, you know, we're trying to fine-tune that, and in your capacity, you're able to do that to make sure that the communication flow is solid.
Right, right.
And that everyone is on the same page with that.
Yep.
So that's great, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on next to item number twelve. This is another new addition to the agenda, and we're going to be having on a regular basis committee updates. And this is, if it's a committee, it's a commission or a board appointed by this council, we're asking that from time to time, we have reports on projects and undertakings, what's happened recently and what is off on the horizon. So tonight, for the inaugural committee update, I welcome Joe Bertrand, who is the chair of the permanent building committee.
It's an honor to be the inaugural. As you'll learn shortly, there's an issue with the Galvin that we are resolving, and we'll go in greater detail on that. The rest of the work on the committee right now is we're finalizing, finishing up the Walton funding mechanisms that we have to go through to pay all the various contractors. And as of this time, as indicated, we are under budget for the Walton. As far as the Public Safety Reassessance Committee, as it has indicated, we have met, and I will be meeting Thursday morning with the architect to go over some concepts that came out of the meeting last week, to answer a lot of, there were numerous, and I mean numerous, questions that were asked for us to come up with the answers to, and we'll be doing that with the police chief on Thursday morning. And hopefully by our next meeting in August, we'll have all those answers. And as far as the DPW facility, Mr. May, we actually met last week with Rick Stinson. We have started the process for the feasibility study. We are getting a request for proposals to be drafted by the DPW staff, and we'll be reviewing them as they're done. And as a result of the new bylaw, I asked that Mr. Stinson come up with a shortlist, and I mean short, because the bylaw talks about a maximum of fifteen, and I'm hoping for a third of that, to be the advisory committee for the feasibility study for the DPW garage. And we'll be looking at all of those issues that you've already mentioned, and we'll be doing so in due course.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bertrand? You set the bar very high now, so for all the other committees that we follow.
Certainly, that's what I'm aiming to do.
Indeed. Thank you for that, and we'll see you in a few moments as well. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Item number thirteen is Events Festival Italia, the tenth annual festival on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
I can't talk, okay.
And we have the Wakefield Community Partnership, I believe, and?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could identify yourself?
I'm the town council. My name is John Ross, and I am a member of the Wakefield Community Partnership. As you know, I'm sure, and I don't want to bore the town council, but the Wakefield Community Partnership was created in two thousand and eight as a town committee that was chartered with events, community pride, and bringing people into the downtown and helping merchants. So since two thousand and seventeen, we have no longer been a part of the town as a committee. We're on our own, we're a five oh one C-three, and we are continuing the events that we have been putting on for now. The Festival Italia will be our tenth year. The Holiday Stroll coming up will be our eleventh year. We're proud to have civic pride, engage the community, have them enjoy our downtown, shop our merchants. And what you have in your packet tonight is, we are seeking permission, we are requesting five things. Would you like me to go down each of those for the town council?
I think if you could identify them briefly, especially for people that may be watching and don't have access to these.
Certainly. So first and foremost, we request to conduct Festival Italia on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, with a rain date of Saturday, August thirty-first, between the hours of two and seven P.M., with street closures for the festival beginning at twelve P.M. and ending at eight P.M. Furthermore, we are requesting the right-of-way in the event area during the festival falls under the permission of the Wakefield Community Partnership. Second, we request that Main Street be closed south to southbound vehicular traffic from Yale Avenue in the South Lee direction to Richardson Ave. We would also close Main Street to northbound vehicular traffic from Water Street to Yale Albion Street will be closed from Main Street to North Ave, and additional closings are Center Street to Main Street, to the rear of the Yolano Building. Princess Street to Main Street, to the rear of the Puket Building. And Avon and Chestnut Streets have limited access off Main Street to North Ave, and that Foster Street has no access at all to Albion. I realize this is tedious. Thank you for your time. We're also asking that the Lincoln Street parking lot be used as a staging area for the festival from seven A.M. to two P.M. So that would be prior to the event, and we furthermore, excuse me, request that the municipal parking areas be available for the town festival. No parking signs. We also request from the relevant town entity be put up Thursday evening, August twenty-second, to notify individuals and townsfolk in the event area that parking restrictions will be in place for the day of the festival. Also, a ten-day liquor license to the Wakefield Community Partnership to purchase beer, wine, which would allow us to obtain transport alcohol two days before the event and return it two days past the event. The alcohol is to be used at possible locations within the shutdown area. And lastly, request is sought that the counselors authorize the participating restaurants the ability to extend their business into the event area. These locations will be, have a predetermined area in front of their business or within the shutdown area itself. So with that, any questions that I might be able to?
Questions or comments for Mr. Ross? Counselor May.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, this is very familiar. You guys do a great job, but these closings, businesses coming on the street, these are all duplications from the last ten or eleven years, right? This isn't major changes, this is all what you've had.
This is a continuation of what we've had, yes, sir.
Right, so this is nothing new. I think it's a great event, and I think, I mean, I back this a hundred percent. So just wanted to make sure, that seemed like it was a ditto from the last year and the year before, prior year, so just wanted to be sure of that. Sounded like it.
It is, we just want to document.
Right, right, it's nothing new, so.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
Thank you, this is a great event. And I just don't recall from last year. So when we, when you say authorize participating restaurants to extend their businesses, is that all restaurants can extend their businesses to the sidewalk?
It would be participating restaurants.
Only participating? And what does that mean? That means businesses that pay money?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that support the festival.
To support, so businesses or restaurants that don't support can't bring their business out front?
That's correct.
Do we usually have the Health Department look at that? I looked at the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw that we have, and it looks like when we do authorize sidewalk cafes, we just ask the Health Department to look at it. So I don't know whether that's been done in the past, or whether it's something that we should just make sure.
I don't recall that being done in the past.
What do you think, Steve?
The Health Department is part of our logistic team.
So they're part of the logistical team?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I think that's the only question I had right now. And everything on the map is essentially the same as it has been in the past?
No, we've made a few changes this year. We're going to have a food court in a different location than we normally have it. Entertainment will be at the library steps, along with, we'll move the La Piazza in front of the library as well to increase flow and.
Okay. Great, thank you.
But I will double-check on the Health Department.
Well, it sounds like it's part of the meeting, so I think it's probably fine.
I know they're there, but that specific question, we will make sure is answered.
Question for you on the alcohol component to this. I know that you were identifying various areas within the confines. What is the plan with that? In the past, you said the La Piazza, you had like a fenced area where alcohol would be served. Is that what the expectation is for this year? Are there other potential locations, and how is that going to be, you know, monitored?
So as in past years, it will be in a fenced area. We typically will hire servers. We have TIP-certified individuals that are addressing behavior. In your packet, there was two pages of typical things that we have looked for in the past. The Wakefield Police have been very gracious to patrol La Piazza, that fenced-in area, quite well. And we're happy to report in past years that that has not been an issue. It's been something that we have been able to handle quite well with the aid of the town, and as a five oh one C-three, that component of the festival is the sole source, primarily, that enables us to have these events year after year after year. I mean, the merchants, corporate sponsors, they all are gracious to us. We're very thankful for that, but at the same point in time, that component particularly raises quite a bit of money and provides quite a bit of joy to the rest of the festival for the merchants and the townsfolk.
And will there be wristbanding, or how is age identification happening?
So in order to purchase alcohol, you will need a wristband, and you are ID'd as well.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you. A couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation, and I know I'm probably not the only one up here who's looking forward to the festival this year. Just a question on sort of the location of the entertainment in La Piazza. With some of the moves that you've made, I mean, is there sufficient room for people who, you know, either kids or others who wouldn't be, you know, enjoying sort of the alcoholic beverage section in La Piazza to enjoy the entertainment, or how will that work sort of logistically?
So we've partnered with the Boys and the Girls Club. They have graciously taken, they have taken over the last end of Albion Street and provide quite a bit of entertainment for children. We do have a train that runs up and down Albion Street, and he will be back again this year. So in previous years, we have not had the activity down the end towards the Rockery as much as we would like. Sometimes these festivals, it's very difficult to get a very good flow of town people in different age groups. So that's one of the reasons why we have moved some entertainment down near the Rockery. We'll have. We'll have a dance competition down towards the farmland, that end of Main Street, for a different age group of children. So we're a small committee, but we do try to think of those things, and that's one of the reasons for the change this year, to kind of push something out to the far end near the Rockery.
Great, thank you. And one question, I think, for Mr. Mullin or Mr. Mayo. In terms of the 10-day liquor license, is there documentation or a form that needs to be completed beyond the sort of the letter that we received, or how does that sort of granting process work?
There should be an application.
I was gonna say, I don't think there was one in our packet.
We don't have. We'll have to fill out the application as well. Further questions or comments? Counselor Butt?
So, John, thank you so much for coming. It's always a fun...
Thank you for having me.
I just have two comments to make, just based on some feedback I got from last year. One is any extra effort not, to make sure businesses that are still having normal business hours at that time and maybe not participating in the festival, their businesses aren't hurt on this day. Just to be extra mindful of, it's great the businesses that participate. We do have businesses that don't participate, make sure. And the second issue is last year, this, I'm wearing my Julie Smith-Gavin environmental hat right now, there were a lot of...
Idling.
Idling of big, like the bank truck and food trucks, and they were parked in front of businesses and homes. And I would just be super careful about having them either in parking lots or not in front of businesses. You're having idling fumes for hours on day going into a home or a business. It's not the message we want to send. So I get, you know, the bank and the food trucks need that, but if we can think about where they're parked, you know, middle of the street, but not right in front of someone's home, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, very good. That's great input. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? All right, so as was discussed, there is a request for a 10-day liquor license. We don't have that liquor license here, and so I would venture, Mr. Mullin, that the most appropriate approach, if it pleases this body, would be to vote on this request, subject to the successful completion and submission to the Town Council, the Town Council's Office.
Yeah, I recommend that.
Right. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Festival Italia, as has been discussed.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor, or Vice Chair Santos. Any further discussion? Okay, so seeing none. Item number 13 before you is the approval of the request for, by the Wakefield Community Partnership, for Festival Italia's 10th Annual Festival in August 24th, 2019, with the street closures and other requests as outlined by Mr. Ross, subject to successful completion and submission of a 10-day alcohol license. All those in favor?
One abstention.
All those opposed?
One abstention.
Abstentions? So that vote is six with Dinoco abstaining. So six to, with one abstention. Great. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you all very much.
Continued success.
Thank you, John Ross.
Next item on the agenda is item number 14, under Presentations and Action Items. This is the Traffic Advisory Recommendation relative to the conversion of Common Street from a two-way to a one-way street southbound between Church and the intersection with Lafayette. So just to orient folks, this would be coming from Church going towards the downtown, only as far as Town Hall.
Yep.
And with that, we have Mr. Renaud from the Public Works Department.
Sure. So the Traffic Advisory Committee met on Friday, June 14th, to discuss basically making Common Street into a one-way from Church to Lafayette. As part of that discussion, we also discussed the control of traffic at the intersection of Lafayette and Common, where we recommend installing two do-not-enter signs as well as two stop signs, to make sure that it's clear as what the movement would be. The portion from Lafayette to Main would remain as a two-way, and also traffic entering in from, I guess what would be the extension of Crescent Street in between the Rockery and the Upper Common would still remain as a two-way. What we would do is recommend that the stop sign at the intersection of Common and the extension of Crescent Street be converted to a yield sign. But that's what we, the Traffic Advisory Committee discussed. We also, in addition to the changes to the traffic, we also looked at the addition of two new handicap spaces to be added. One handicap space on the east side of Common Street adjacent to the Upper Common, there's an entryway right there, as well as one at the intersection of Lafayette and Common, on Lafayette Street. And that is about what we discussed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Just curious, you know, given that this has been one of the things that has been discussed as part of the Envision process, and I recognize there's sort of some discussion that's happened separate from the Envision process as well, but what was the sense from the Traffic Advisory Committee's discussion as to sort of why we'd look to make the change now as opposed to as part of a larger master plan for downtown?
I mean, honestly, the discussion initiated here back at your June 8th meeting, it was kind of referred to the Traffic Advisory Committee. We didn't see really any concern as to why we wouldn't recommend the install, so I wouldn't say that we looked at it to the scale you're referring to. You know, we took the charge of reviewing the traffic in the area and came up with a plan we think that would work. You know, I think this is a good opportunity to give a quick trial to see if this works. I mean, there's nothing set in stone. We can still take signs down if it's not working, for sure. So it gives us a good opportunity to look at one of the recommendations of the Envision that's really kind of outside of the downtown itself and see if this, if this works for the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions or comments? Counselor, Counselor Smith-Gavin?
I just had a question, or maybe I missed it, but so if you can't go north, right?
Correct.
My question is, you're gonna have to go all the way to Salem and Main Street. I mean, I know what my question is. To be able to take a left onto Church, you're gonna have to go to Common, I'm sorry, to Salem Street and Main Street. Will there be a left turn on green? Will there be a left turn arrow there? Because it's gonna be tough to take a left.
Well, you can still take your right onto, you can take your right onto Crescent and take a left if you're going that route. But you're gonna be coming down Main Street, so I guess I'm not...
So if you're coming down Main Street, you... So which way are we going on? Sorry, now it's yours.
The one way is kinda...
Yeah, so normally, if I were gonna go into the parking lot on Spalding Street, I would come down, I live in Greenwood, I would come down Common Street. But that will be one way going the other way now. So I will, in order to get into that parking lot, I will have to go down Main Street, take a left at the corner of Main and Salem.
Onto Church.
Onto Church. So my question is, will there be a turn light on Main and Salem Street?
The intent was not to add any turn signal or changes to the, no modifications to the signal.
No modifications to that signal.
Right. Yeah, it's a pretty low-traffic movement, honestly.
Okay.
We can look at that, though.
I think we should look at that. If this, yeah, it does move forward.
Counselor Dinoco, do you?
Thank you, sorry about that.
This discussion, thank you, Mr. Jones, this discussion has been going on just prior to Envision, but it came up at Envision, but the Envision one was the entire length of Common Street. And that drew a lot of questions, especially where it met Yale. And that was where all the concern was with that discussion that day, and that's why VHB at that time said, "We'll look into it further to find out what they're going to do with that teak connection on the Envision plan." But it had nothing to do with this coming forward, but it is part of the overall plan for the Envision. This actually makes sense because it will create more parking in that area, if you follow the plan that they shown in this. And my question is, will there be still a no-left turn sign posted on the extension?
Yeah, we weren't planning to remove it, but we could look into that if that's...
Well, as long as it's, I think it needs to stay there if you're going to still allow them to come down in front of Otter Chokes to make a left onto Lafayette.
Onto Lafayette, yep.
So if you're coming down center, you don't want them to be able to make a left turn into uncommon traffic.
Sure, exactly.
So I think that makes perfect sense to do that.
Yeah.
Now, what'd you say you were going to put from center to Common? Was that a yield sign?
Yeah, so we have one yield sign. So right now, there's a stop sign at the intersection, so right where your no-left turn is, there's actually a stop sign right there.
Okay.
But we would be putting a stop sign at the intersection of Lafayette, so we would remove the stop sign, make that a yield, so people could go right, you know, basically that right turn.
Coming off of center to get to Lafayette, that's a yield.
Yeah, there would be a yield, and then you'd get to a stop sign when you're on Common.
Would that open up any possibilities of making the crosswalk? That would make the crosswalk a little bit safer, wouldn't it?
I would think so, yeah, definitely.
Especially off of the Upper Common?
Yeah, you'd have, well, you'd have stop control on both directions there, so it definitely would make it safer.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Santos?
My understanding is through some of the studies in this area that was looked at, that the vast majority of traffic does go south down Common.
Exactly.
Even though people might use it, I certainly use it sometimes to go north, but the vast majority is south.
Sure.
Someone had mentioned 80% to me. On the Traffic Advisory Committee, has someone taken Chief Scori's place?
He was still there.
He was still there, okay, good.
He decided not to come to this meeting, unfortunately.
No, that's okay. So I just wanted to make sure that the police were present.
Sure.
Now Chief Scori, but Lieutenant Scori was the Traffic Advisory God for a long time, who really, I think, has a good sense of what works and what doesn't work. He's come back to us and told us things wouldn't work. I do think this, it absolutely is part of the Envision project, but it's also something we've been talking about for a long time, to try to bring people into the downtown and have that flow. So I do think it's a smart move. As you said, if it's a disaster, we switch it up.
I will say with that, too, just having been with this piece since the fall, and Steve, you can speak to this as well, we've looped in Chiefs, now Chief Scori throughout this, and this has been an ongoing discussion. There are a couple other benefits derived from this. One of them is that crossover, as we've talked about, from the Lower Common across to Common, over Church. Right now, you have this kind of odd configuration where you have cars coming in two different directions, although northbound, it's very limited usage, but it creates an impediment there for those trying to cross. One of the things we've talked a lot about is trying to find the connector between the lake and the downtown. This is a part of trying to, you know, make that psychologically easier to do, to be able to cross over. So I do expect that part of this is we'll look at how we can perhaps enhance that crosswalk, even in the short term, before the Envision project happens. But it's meant to help the flow of pedestrian, you know, traffic over Church and down Common. It also addresses the issue around the Rockery. You mentioned Crescent, but also before Crescent, if you're coming Main northbound, and you can, people will cut over in front of the Rockery. So, and then you're, so you're going, you're going northbound towards Spalding, as you was in the parking lot, you kind of cut over in front of the Rockery, or you come up to Crescent, and then you take a left, and then you take a right. So it creates these kind of odd configurations that VHB has looked at. We've spoken with them, they've studied this as well, they offered a memo on that, but they've talked about this, and I don't think at any point they've wavered on the recommendation, their solid recommendation that from Church until Lafayette, if nothing else, that becomes a one-way, and then we look at how we go further southbound beyond Lafayette. I think that's been pretty clear.
Correct, yeah. And VHB also does sit on the Traffic Advisory Committee, so they have a member that's there that also assists us with that, so, just for...
Counselor Butt?
So this is something that has been mentioned before. I don't remember when we, when you said June 8th, and we didn't have a meeting June 8th, when you said...
Well, that was what was in the memo from the Chief.
So, yeah, June 8th was a Saturday, I think, so that's not when we had a meeting. So I have no problem with us discussing this. I don't know if the public was made aware about it, so I got a few emails today about people who saw it on the agenda, and they didn't have an opportunity to weigh in. And Traffic Advisory is a little unique of a group, because you meet Tuesday mornings, right? So it's not...
It's in the morning, it varies on the day, but yeah.
So I'm just gonna suggest we hold off voting on this till we, till members of the public get a chance to win. I don't feel comfortable when people just found out about it through the agenda. I get, it was discussed, it was discussed at Envision meetings, I didn't go to the last Envision meeting. I know this has been discussed, but this specific proposal, I don't think members of the public were given an opportunity to weigh in, so I can't support this at the time.
Any further questions or comments? So I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Committee in conjunction with VHB relative to making Church, I'm sorry, Common Street one-way southbound from Church through Lafayette.
So moved.
Seconded discussion.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Further discussion? Counselor Dinoco.
I have no problem having individuals have the opportunity to make comment. I think that in the last four or five months since we started Envision, we do a hell of a better job at notifying the public at what our meetings have scheduled. Jen is doing a fantastic job on the website. The item is constantly posting information. I don't think everyone needs an invitation, they just need to be due diligent at what's going on here, and I know you have been informative, I know every one of us here have been informative to let the people know what's happening and when there's meetings to be discussed, and when you should come to meetings. Not everyone can make meetings. You yourself just said, "You can't make all the Envision meetings." We could have meetings scheduled to have people come to this, and you may get two or three people that will come to the meeting. Okay, fine, but there was opportunity. If you've been to the Envision meetings, which almost everyone here has been to at least one, you've seen this discussion. It's been there.
Correct. And you didn't know what's up for...
Oh, sorry, one at a time. All right, so Counselor Dinoco finished first.
So as far as being up for a vote today, we got the packet, we got the information, it's on the agenda for discussion. The packet went out Friday. Everyone goes online and looks at that packet that I know of, okay? They wanna know what's going to be discussed here, whether or not there should be an attendance or not. I think we do our due diligence to present things in a timely fashion. I'm not sure what it would gain to have an additional discussion further on. So, I mean, my opinion is that we should move forward with this.
All right. I do want to point out that Traffic Advisory routinely comes before this body.
That's correct.
And we routinely are approving requests.
And we also provided notification to all the direct abutters on Common Street for this meeting specifically, so that went out on Thursday.
Okay, next then, Counsel...
No.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. So, you know, I certainly agree, Counselor Dinoco, that, you know, the process of engaging with the public through Envision has actually been quite good, and I think it's one of the things that as a town, we should be proud of the fact that the level of transparency and engagement with the community through that process has been really strong. However, you know, we heard a couple of individuals during our comment period today talk about the fact that, you know, the presentation of Common Street and the closure there was presented as part of an idea that we're viewing through this master planning process that isn't even at a 25% design phase. And so in light of that, my inclination is to not rush into making a decision, you know, but to let the process play out so people have a chance to, you know, make their voices heard and understand what this means for them. I'd also point out, I appreciate that sort of the abutters on Common Street have been notified. One of the things about closing Common Street to traffic in one direction is that does impact other streets, and I don't know the extent to which, for example, people on Lafayette Street have been notified, and that certainly does impact traffic flow there. And so, you know, my inclination, while I'm actually not opposed to the concept of looking at closing Common Street one-way to traffic, I mean, I think is part of the master planning process. I think there's a lot of validity to that, and, you know, I can see myself supporting that down the line. I really don't see us, I don't think it's prudent for us, though, to make that recommendation today.
Counselor Smith-Gavin?
I agree with Counselor Chines and Counselor Butt. I actually pulled the Traffic Advisory Committee agenda for June 14th, and it says, "Potential one-way streets, study of Common Street, Center Street, and Princess Street." And I think if I were really concerned about this, that would not have been compelling enough for me to make an 8:00 AM meeting. I mean, it really seemed like it was more of a discussion and not of the decision, so I have to say I was actually a bit surprised myself to see it on the agenda. And so then I went to the town website to see, are there any minutes from the Traffic Advisory Committee? And Traffic Advisory Committee is not even a committee that we list, might be something for our liaison of committees to look at. It's not a listed committee, so there's no way to find out, you can see the agenda on the public forums, but you can't see the minutes. So I am gonna vote against this, similar to others. I'm not necessarily opposed to this being a one-way street, but... this being a one-way street, but, um, and while I think we are doing well with the Envision, I still think that there is some diligence that needs to be done on this particular issue.
I do want to point out with the Envision, um, component to this, that we have had four public forums, um, anyone who cannot make the forums can view them online, they're all online right now. Um, we've had, the first forum in particular, I believe it was the first, had posted notes where literally people were going through and making comments. We've had hundreds of residents weigh in on this, we've had, um, many, I don't even know how many comments online, um, have been offered to us, um, through the website. There has been consistent discussion about this section of Common Street being one-way. The disconnect, I'll say, or the, the matter under further review is from Lafayette southbound. That has, that is where, um, there has been a question of what makes sense. I do think that for too long, we've talked about the idea of connecting the lake to the downtown, I see this as an opportunity to do that. If it doesn't work, we change signs, it's not a big deal. If it does work, it can improve the vitality and the vibrancy of our downtown. So there's little risk and the potential for some significant reward here. I agree, the Envision Project is a work in progress. It will be a considerable amount of time before we're to the point where all those components are implemented. Part of this is a bit of a, of trial run, to see how things are. The traffic studies support that there is not much northbound traffic going down, down Common. The driver experience tells you that you have people that are cutting over Main in a very dangerous way in front of the rockery, and some people on Crescent that are rounding around a right turn with vehicles parked there, with cars that are opening doors to get out, cars that are northbound facing, opening doors to get out with, uh, cars that are swinging around the corner, you know, potentially. There are a number, the, the crossing over, across Church is, at times, quite treacherous because of the fact that you could have two-way traffic coming, so there are a number of safety concerns independent of the, of the Envision Project that are addressed through this change. And again, if we find that it, for some reason, it's not working like any of the changes we made with Traffic Advisory, we can revisit them. I don't recall the last time we approved something, uh, recommended by Traffic Advisory, and then changed it, unless they, you know, I, I don't recall a single instance of that happening, so, uh, this has been talked through, and, and I don't want to confuse this with it just being an Envision Wakefield issue. Sure, it's a part of that, but it's not the, it, it's also an independent or a standalone relative to a safety issue that we can address now, and should be with or without the Envision Project. So, uh, Vice Chair Santos.
Um, the, the abutters being notified is important, um, and did you hear from any abutters?
Personally, no.
On Common? Um, I see this as separate from Envision, I know it's a part of Envision, but we have been talking about this even before Envision got off the ground, we've talked about this in prior, um, Board of Selectmen meetings, as it making sense from a safety standpoint, as a traffic flow standpoint. So my voting on this is like any, as you said, like any other Traffic Advisory Committee vote. If we find, if we find it's a problem, if we find there's too much spill over that's burdening another, um, street, then we change it. This is not something that's set in stone, but I do think it's a first step. The Envision Project changes are not gonna happen for years, this might be a little help, um, to talk about just helping out our downtown.
Any further comments or, or questions? Otherwise, the motion on the floor is, is the approval of the Traffic Advisory, Counselor May, yes?
Just one quick one, um, just a clarification, Bill, um, so as I look at, uh, Common Street, um, will a silly parking on both sides for that small segment, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so you're not losing anything, alright, that's it. Just wanted to hear that.
And you mentioned two, you gaining handicap spaces, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna add two handicaps, yeah, 'cause we'll, we'll also stripe the spaces on Common.
Great, thank you. Alright, so the, the motion before you is the, is the approval of the Track, Traffic Advisory recommendation, uh, to make, uh, Common Street, uh, one-way southbound from Church through Lafayette. This is item fourteen A on our agenda, all those in favor? So I see Dinoco, May, Santos, and Dombrowski, and all those opposed? We have Butt, Chines, and Smith Galvin, alright, so the motion passes, four to three. Thank you. The next item is item fourteen B, a Traffic Advisory recommendation. This was, um, relative to signs being installed, um, north end of the building at six twenty-seven Main Street, to the driveway at the end of the building that prohibits parking from six to ten AM, Mr. Ono.
Sure, so, uh, Traffic Advisory Committee reviewed southbound traffic on Main Street, getting backed up in the early morning hours due to vehicles making a left-hand turn into the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. Southbound traffic is unable to pass on the right due to vehicles being parked in front of the, uh, the six twenty-seven Main Street Enterprise rent-a-car. Uh, this problem is similar in nature to an issue recently addressed on Main Street in the area of the Hallmark Health Building. Uh, we are recommending that signs be installed from the driveway at the north end of building at six twenty-seven to the driveway at the south end of the building, uh, that prohibits parking from six AM to ten AM. Uh, this recommendation is also consistent with the restriction that was put, um, put near the Hallmark Health Building.
Any questions on this request? Counselor Chines.
Thank you. Just a, a quick question, um, uh, the Animal Kingdom business that's there, do they have their own parking lot, or, I, I know there's a parking lot next to that building, but I don't know if that's theirs or, or belongs to another business.
To be honest with you, I, I don't know if I could answer that one.
I don't know if anyone takes their pets there, if that wants to know.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick question.
Counselor May.
Thanks for looking into this bill too, um, so, uh, like anything else, we can change this if it doesn't work, but, I mean, it's definitely, something needs to be done, so, um, do we envision this being a permanent change, or just while the construction's going on, or do we not think about that, or, I mean...
Well, I think we can evaluate it after the construction's completed to see, I mean, obviously, part of it, we think, is because of the construction. To be honest, that was discussed at the TAC, but, um, you know, at this point, we're recommending it as a, as a permanent install, and we can evaluate going further.
It probably makes sense, just because, um, there were problems before construction, it just made worse after construction, so I just, didn't know if anybody had talked about that before.
Yeah, it was brought up.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, okay, good, thanks.
Counselor Smith Galvin.
I have a question, um, at one point, the right lane going north on Main Street was a right turn only, and then we actually clawed that back, I guess.
Okay.
Um, was, was there any, I mean, I, I wonder whether that helped things, I mean, that was a right lane only for maybe like, six weeks or something. So it was quick, and I just, I'm kinda wondering what happened and whether that didn't...
Going south.
What?
Going south.
Going south.
That'd be southbound.
I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry, going south. Clearly, I've directionally challenged. Um, but I, I guess I'm just, I, I don't know kind of why it was changed, or whether that kind of relieved it, you don't recall that.
I think it predated me, if I ever get...
Yeah, we, I think we found that that caused a lot of havoc with the Galvin.
Uh, so it backed things up.
It backed things up there, so we kind of made the change, it was...
Because I do think that that's one of the problems there, is people race to come out of there, to get into the one lane, to pass the people who aren't back, turning into Dunkin' Donuts.
That stopped because of what happened with the Galvin.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions? I will say, you know, this did come out of constituent issues, um, when we were last there, and, uh, when we last convened, I think that that's, you know, it, it shows how we can be quite nimble, uh, as a council, and act very quickly, that was about two weeks ago. And now we've addressed the issue, um, potentially, you know, pending this vote, so, uh, thank you to, um, Counselor, uh, May and Counselor Dinoco for having raised it at that time. So at this point, I will entertain a motion, uh, for, to accept the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Committee, uh, relative to the, um, no parking from six AM to ten AM, uh, at six twenty-seven, in front of six twenty-seven Main Street.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor May, Vice Chair Santos, all those in favor? Okay, seeing seven zero, the motion passes. Finally, we have, um, items fourteen C, recommendation from the Traffic Advisory Committee regarding no parking here to corner. Mr. Ono.
The Traffic, Traffic Advisory Committee considered a request from the resident at sixty-six Chestnut Street to have a no parking here to corner sign installed at all four approaches of the Chestnut and Cedar Street intersection. Uh, this intersection is a four-way stop. Traffic Advisory Committee recently recommended the same restrictions around the Chestnut Street Emerson Street intersection, which is also a four-way stop. Uh, TAC is recommending that the no parking here to corner signs be installed twenty feet from all four corners, um, at the Chestnut and Cedar Street intersection.
Any questions? I will entertain a motion for item fourteen C, um, a no parking here to corner signs to be installed in all four directions at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Cedar Street.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May, all those in favor? Okay, seven zero, the motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item fourteen D is the Galvin Middle School, we have representatives, uh, coming up from, uh, Bond Construction Company, as well as our Permanent Building Committee to talk about some of the issues that have been raised recently relative to settling at the Galvin Middle School. Good evening, again, and good evening.
Thank you, again. Uh, the Permanent Building Committee in the past four years has been monitoring the settling of a portion of the Galvin Middle School. Uh, in the very beginning, uh, it was, uh, within tolerance, uh, but within the past year, it has reached beyond that stage. I would like to introduce you to Frank Hayes from Bond Brothers. Frank is here to explain the situation and, and go over the solution that we've come up, that they have come up with, um, and I'd also like to commend, uh, Bond Brothers for their, uh, assistance and their cooperation with the Permanent Building Committee in this process.
Good evening.
Well, you, Frank.
Thank you, I'm also a resident too, just to be...
Well, I didn't want to tell them where you live.
Um, I thought it'd be good if I gave a little bit of background on the foundation system, without getting too technical at this evening, uh, hour of the evening. Uh, just so you can understand, I'll roll through a timeline, uh, that I have on a slide here, and, uh, and then we can talk about the fixes, and then open up for any questions. So, uh, we were hired, uh, to build a Galvin Middle School, um, several years ago, uh, as a part of a cost and savings recommendation of value engineering, we, uh, presented, uh, with the architect and structural engineer to install a, uh, soil stabilization, uh, for the foundation. Initially, it was, uh, required to be all pressure-injected footings, uh, the savings at that time was, uh, well in excess of one point five million dollars. Uh, very proven technology, used all over the place. That got voted in, and we proceeded with that system, and we hired a company called Helical, uh, and they use a, uh, internationally known system called GeoPier, so they were basically a reseller of the GeoPier system locally. Um, Helical uses a, uh, the, the GeoPier system is known as, uh, rammed aggregate piers, uh, and, and there's two types, there's grouted rammed aggregate piers and ungrouted rammed aggregate piers. So underneath all of the major structural components, the columns, all the footings, things like that, we use grouted, uh, piers, and that has been absolutely fine, nothing has moved, so that's, uh, the blessing. Uh, the ungrouted rammed aggregate piers are a soil stabilization methodology to support slab, uh, system, especially in soil areas like the organics, uh, that we encountered at the Galvin. So, uh, I would say that the technology that was suggested by Helical, uh, is, was very common, they use it all the time, and it was actually, uh, peer-reviewed by other engineers at the time. So, uh, you know, fast forward to, uh, a little bit of timelines, a lot of words here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna summarize this. Uh, prior to us achieving full certificate of occupancy of the school, uh, some cracking was noticed, some cracking in some grout lines in the, in the ceramic tile, a little bit in the drywall, uh, we completed those repairs before we, uh, left site. Um, we monitored it, there wasn't much movement for about eighteen months, um, and then we started to notice a little bit more, a little bit of the, the settlement, and again, as Joe pointed out, it was deemed to be within tolerance. Uh, we did have a settlement with GeoPier though, uh, for funds to do cosmetic repairs in, um, when we do that, in two thousand seventeen, uh, summer of two thousand seventeen, and again, uh, some, some floor, bit of floor leveling, pulling up some floors, floor levering, fixing doors, uh, a few cracks, repainting, kind of just freshening the place, the place up. Sat, and it seemed to be fine for a period of time, uh, in December two thousand seventeen, um, we were called back out to the Galvin for another investigation, uh, and it appeared that there was a little bit of, I'll call it this minor settlement where, uh, some grout was separating and things like that, again, nothing major, but we were, uh, monitoring closely. Uh, we also started to do some, uh, measurements on the, the, where the slab was, and so we could start to monitor the settlement and things like that. Uh, along that time, we put Helical on notice, uh, that there were additional issues, uh, beyond, uh, what they had, uh, contributed for cosmetic repairs. So, in, uh, December two thousand eight, eighteen, and, and kind of up to current, uh, we basically had Helical on notice, told them they had to come and, uh, solve the settlement permanently, and, uh, we've been working through ways to, uh, to fix the, uh, issue. Really, the only way to do it is to go back in through the slab and re-support, uh, with a series of grouted piers, and, uh, that work has started, uh, it actually, we started prep work, uh, last Thursday, um, finished up most of the prep work today, and we'll be starting to install these piers, and I don't know if anyone's interested, I can tell you how it all works, or, it's, um, but, uh, we are gonna basically do, uh, the goal is to get half of it done, uh, this summer, and, you know, if everything goes really well, we'll, we'll tackle as many more rooms as we can, but we didn't want to be overly aggressive, because obviously, the most important thing is that the school's ready for students in, in September, when the time comes. So the area in green on the screen, uh, is what we'll be, uh, tackling this summer, so that basically involves putting about a hundred and eighty holes through the slab, uh, going down anywhere from ten to twenty feet, and installing a series of, uh, grouted piers that will come up and, and re-support the slab, and then, uh, re-leveling the floors, replacing all the finishes, fixing door frames, kind of repainting and freshening up the whole place, it'll look good as new, uh, by the time the students get back. Uh, we did, uh, do a test pile already, uh, we load-tested that with fifteen thousand pounds on a thirty-square-foot, uh, uh, area, which is about fifty times the, the weight that that slab is supposed to take, no movement whatsoever, so we're pretty confident that the, the system is going to work going forward. So, with that, we're, we're, like I said, we're underway, uh, it's gonna be a, at least a six-day-a-week operation, we're committed to getting it done, uh, ten-hour days, and if it takes more than that, we, we'll make sure that it happens.
I would just like to point out that the building itself is structurally sound, there's no issue there whatsoever, and this whole thing is at no cost to the town.
Correct. Well, thank you for that explanation, and with, with that, are there, um, any questions or comments from anyone on the, on the body? Counselor Chines.
Thank you, uh, just, you know, curious from a Permanent Building Committee standpoint, as we think about sort of future projects, are there sort of lessons learned or root causes that, um, you know, we can kind of take away from this experience that we can apply going forward, or, or how do we think about this for the next major project, uh, that, that we undertake?
Well, the, the big problem is that Helical has no idea why this occurred.
Mm-hmm.
This is the only failure, as I recall...
Yeah.
That they've ever, that they've ever experienced.
So, so they, let me just elaborate on that, if that's okay? There, there's some theories, and...
There's theories.
We were gonna go in at Christmas time and chunk, cut up a piece of the slab and, and try to figure that out, and, and I think, after going out and talking through it and how disruptive that was gonna be, the, the short story was, they said, it, it doesn't matter what the cause is, it needs to be fixed, so they, and I, we tended to agree with that, that it didn't make sense to go try to figure out what happened, and let's focus more on the fix at this point. There are theories about, uh, these non-grouted piers, um, if the organics dry out, and, and the best, uh, image I can give you is, a, a bag of peat moss, when it's wet, it tends to hold its shape very well, when it dries out, it crumbles.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, this rammed aggregate pier system, when they're non-grouted, uh, rely on the pressure it exerts on, on the surrounding soils, so, I think their thought process when they designed it, they're the, they're soil experts, I'm not, so, just to be clear in that, but, was that, uh, probably what happened is the organic dried at a rate, uh, inconsistent with anything they've ever seen before, and these things just started to fall apart in some areas.
So without the grouting, effectively, the...
Yeah, the grout tends to hold, it holds it together.
The piers would kind of fall apart if you don't have anything kind of grabbing them back together.
And then, and then the slabs, actually, it, it's just a series of dips, it's not like the whole thing hasn't dropped, so it's just a series of kind of bellies that have occurred in the slab underneath where that soil support would be.
Thank you.
And they were well aware of the soil conditions beforehand, this is nothing that there was, no, uh, mystery as to what it was.
Vice Chair Santos.
So for the texting and email warriors that will be all over the community page, which I don't read, so I'm guessing what they might say.
My daughters should be well informed.
Yes, I...
I am not near it.
Neither am I. But it sounds like best practices were used, that the standard had, this is what had worked before, that there wasn't negligence, that something came up that was very unexpected, that's being taken care of now. Our children are safe because the building's structurally sound, and it's no cost to the town.
Correct.
Good bubble? Okay.
And, I mean, just for example, the second, third floor, there's no effect whatsoever. It's just a small, the area that's outlined there that needs the work to be done, and it's on the first floor.
Great.
And they will have brand-new floors, brand-new painting, brand-new waxing, brand-new. It'll look just like it did when it opened.
Thank you very much.
And we'll make, and the Permanent Building Committee will make sure of that.
Further comments or questions? I guess one question I have is, what if this continues to happen?
Well, this will stop it.
I mean, it's been tested. Bond commissioned an addition, an additional engineer to review it, an engineer with stellar reputation that we agreed on. And they have indicated that this is the solution. And, but to make sure, they tested it. And they tested it over the weekend and did a load test, and it failed. I mean, no, it succeeded greatly.
Basically, we're...
Nothing happened.
Reinforcing the system by, with the grouting. But the other thing that we are doing here is going to an end-bearing system. So these things are being installed all the way through the organics. It's not relying on that organic soil down to bearing material. And so when I said ten to twenty feet, we have the contour of the land where the bearing material exists, how far underneath the slab. So these are gonna be called end-bearing columns now that are gonna support the slab. So we're pretty confident, you know, when it gets in and installed over the course of the summer and all the finishes, I'm not gonna guarantee you that a cop joint might not open up here and there. And, you know, from a cosmetic standpoint, we're gonna be back in there next summer anyways. But this will stop the settlement, so.
Now, what if it happens in other areas that are not in the red squiggly line right now?
So the organics, I mean, that's largely, we have, that's very well mapped out. Part of the system, you know, beyond the library actually isn't even on these because the soil's so good down there. It's just not a regular spread footing. So this is a foundation system that's only at this end of the building.
This area in the nineteenth century was a pond. And they were well aware of that because I actually, from a person in my house who showed me a historic picture of it, and we were able to show it to them, so.
And what is the...
And from a legal, sorry, Mr. Chairman, from a legal standpoint, we have not let the company off the hook either. So for exactly what you're talking about, any other fertile, further settlement in the building or in the unlikely event that this system does not work, so.
I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of, you know, what the guarantee is going forward. You know, if three years from now, if this happens, again, for whatever reason, I don't want to see the town being on the hook for that, is what it comes down to.
Yeah, understood.
So we have, we have that assurance that that's not going to be the case going forward.
I think I have many engineers who, professional engineers, who say, "If it's gonna happen, it will happen. It'll continue to happen now as opposed to three years from now." So, and your town council over here has my name and number on speed dial as far as making sure it happens to, so. We're on the hook.
Fair enough. Great, thank you. Counselor May?
One question. So Phase One, maybe roughly half, you'll finish before school starts this year. And then second phase, same thing, but just before school starts, you'll be done? Okay. So no, excuse me, no disruptions this year or next year? That's fine.
The only disruption was that they couldn't have summer school there.
Okay.
That was the only disruption that was...
Gotcha.
It was rescheduled, and the superintendent knew about this a long time ago and scheduled appropriately.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had wide-open communication with the superintendent and his staff.
We've been talking for months with the school department.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you. As stewards of all the town buildings, it's important that we had this explanation. And I know a lot of people had questions, and the questions were very reasonable, especially of, you know, a building at such a young age. So thank you for coming in and for the explanation. Mr. Mullen will continue to have you on speed dial just in case there's anything. Thank you.
And I know where he lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. Item fourteen E is a library gift in the amount of $799. Printers from various, donations from various donors with our thanks. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion passes. Fourteen F, another library gift in the amount of $348 from various donors with our thanks. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. All those in favor? Item fourteen G is a banner request. Wakefield Repertory Theater. They're requesting to hang a banner on the light poles on Main Street just before the Armory from July 22, 2019 through August 5, 2019, to promote Chitty Chitty Bang Bang.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the banner requests? Seven zero, the motion passes. Item fourteen H, kiosk posting policy. Non-electric kiosk posting policy with any revisions following public input period is now presented again before the town council with a vote anticipated. So in your packets, we have the kiosk policy that has been in the public domain since our last meeting. I think the morning following our last meeting, it was available. We also did receive some feedback to Town Hall. Any written feedback from Town Hall is, has also been included in your packets, written feedback received as of Thursday, Mr. Mayo, I believe.
Correct.
Correct, when the packets had gone out to councilors. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the passage of the kiosk posting policy as presented in your current packets following the public input period.
So moved. I assume discussion? Second.
Okay. Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Smith-Galvin. Open up for discussion. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I'm happy to share, since I was the one who proposed that we go for public comment. As you say, it was posted the day after our last meeting. It was publicized in the newspaper and through social media. We got a fair amount of feedback, both written, and I know Steve Mayo entertained a lot of it, as did, I took a lot of phone calls. I think the, what I like now about this policy, first, I like the preamble where we recognize Main Streets for their donation, and as much as we did earlier in this meeting. The, instead of only publicizing events, we've expanded it to also include content so that artwork can be shown when, as, again, I'm reluctant to call it filler, but if there's not enough activities, we can, we can display some other things. So we're not limiting ourselves to events. I had some conversations with Main Streets. Although it's not written in here, I think it's reasonable that if there is an abundance of activities, that we try to prioritize ones that are happening in Wakefield. I didn't see any problems with that and thought I would just bring that up. And there were some concerns about the cost of printing on larger special paper. I don't really know a way around that right now. I think we need to see how it goes. We want it to look uniform and to look nice. We did put a poster up in it this week. I realize that it was not probably perfectly installed, but I don't want to confuse kind of the policy with the implementation, and we'll get the implementation down. So I'm pretty comfortable with this at this point. I do hope that we'll check in with Main Streets periodically to make sure that it is kind of fulfilling the goals that they had set. And if we need to revisit it, we can do that. That's my opinion.
One thing I'll say on this is, thank you also, Mr. Mullen, for working on this policy. It's much appreciated. This issue, to my understanding, came before us, back in twenty, this body, back in 2016 initially. And it was very clear that this was, these kiosks were intended to try to promote activity and vibrancy in the downtown. And I think that it's important that those of us who have touched this policy are able to speak to that. And that mission remains the same. We've talked about ways in which to do that, but we've never lost focus on the fact that it's to promote vibrancy in the downtown area. It's to help business. These are not billboards in the sense of putting up, you know, a sale at a store, but they are, you know, encouragements to shop local or events. We've talked about Festival Italia, for example, a number of events like that that will come up from time to time. And I do think that it's important also to point out that this is a living document, and we need to kind of feel our way along and see how it goes. And as you point out, Counselor Smith-Galvin, we may want to make changes from time to time, depending on what kind of response we get back from folks. And we're very much indebted to Wakefield Main Streets for what they did to get these kiosks into the locations they are. I mean, they did a heck of a job raising a lot of money. And we had a lot of individual sponsors, business sponsors as well, that made them possible. And we can't lose the focus on that. So promoting our downtown, promoting our businesses, that remains the goal. I know that there had been some concern about, you know, some aspects of it. And that was a dialogue that has been had, and I think will probably continue to be had after we start to see the different posters that end up in here. Further comment or questions? Counselor Dinaco?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. As I've discussed with you prior to this and with Steve, I've fielded numerous calls on both sides of the coin on this right now. And I'm just going to address a couple as you've already initiated. Main Streets was the focus of this back from 2016. You are correct with that. This is my last tie in to Main Streets. So I'm a little bit more involved with it in my own opinion, but not in theirs, because I know what we went through at that time to get the approval. Four of you weren't sitting on the board when this was approved. There's only three of us right now. It was Ms. Santos, Mr. May, and myself that are still here from the original approval. At that time, there was a significant benefit seen by starting in, creating that public-private connection, okay? Main Streets had a lot to offer, still does have a lot to offer. So they came up with an opportunity, and we fought for the ability to do the Commonwealth Place Grant by doing the patricity. And in that document, once it was approved by us, it states what the intent was initially from Main Streets. And that was to draw people from the lake into the downtown to help promote businesses. It didn't mention anything about churches, which I don't think should be on the kiosk at all. It was, political events should not be on there at all. But I don't know how we're going to control that end. That'll be a question for council, because we had to go into a different approach for the American Civic Center on how a certain flag, what flags were on, by making it be part of, you had to be renting or be a part of the American Civic Center. I don't know how that will work here, but that's not the issue that I'm trying to make at this point. I have no problem with the actual policy that was here because in comparing, in comparing this to the one that Main Streets presented, it's pretty much, pretty close to the same policy that it is. What it does eliminate, though, is that continued connection between the public and the private connection by eliminating Main Street completely from having some sort of, say, even small at what goes on with the kiosks. So that was another issue that I think, in my opinion, should be addressed and considered. But with this issue here, we still haven't resolved the issue of the key, of the plaques. And I know it's going to come to us at some point with the plaques. Four sponsors donated $2,500 to have their name, not to be part of it, to have their name on a plaque installed onto the kiosks. I know that I've talked to Julian, who's an avid supporter of almost every organization in this town, as to what his envision was when he gave $2,500 to this. He expected a four-and-a-half-inch medallion installed on one side of the kiosk. And we didn't know what the kiosk was gonna look like, but that's what he was promised back then. So it's the savings bank, the item, Enke's Tree Service, we're all given, pick a kiosk. At that time, there was only three. So that issue still needs to, because it's an obligation that if we are now going to be the overseer, we're obligated to make sure that component is now put on here. If that's how this board's gonna come down, we still owe them that piece of the pie. So there's just certain things that, the policy, item number three, I don't know how many calls I must have gotten on, organizations holding events locally though outside the town of Wakefield. That sent up flags everywhere because they didn't, they don't want anything, we don't want to be promoting people to leave the town of Wakefield to do something when we have so much to offer here. Now, everyone knows, me personally, I've been promoting that now for the last eight, 10 years, okay? I'm a very strong supporter of the businesses in this town. I can agree to that. It's one of the reasons why I stepped down from the chamber. When I joined Linfield, I didn't, it didn't work well with me, okay? So I picked my battles and I left. So at this point, those are my concerns right now. How do you address that, if we address it, as far as the shopping allowing them to do outside of Wakefield? I'd like to see that the church be added into postings, not considered, because it doesn't promote the Wakefield community as a whole. That should be enlisted in there. And as far as continuing with the connection with the Main Streets, because I do personally know that Beverly, Peabody, Salem, East Boston, Boston, Somerville, they all have strong Main Street organizations going on right now, and they embrace them. The communities embrace them as far as having them to help. And this is what you want to do. You want them involved in some fashion in bringing those things forward. But again, it's my recommendation that we consider it. I would like the board to at least think about it before we fulfill our last vote.
I know, Paul, that that has been an issue that has been raised by some folks. Mr. Mayo, I had asked if you could give us, I'm gonna be able to task of giving us some examples, compiling a list of events that happen outside of town but are Wakefield-based organizations.
So the section of the, of the policy is called Content Guidelines. And it says sponsoring organizations' location of events. Postings will be considered for public community events and content hosted by, in the section that Mr. Dinaco talked about, a Wakefield-based organization holding its event locally though outside of Wakefield. And so the history of events that I envision here like this, that I think covers all of this part of the policy, are things like the FOLQ Annual Breakfast, Annual Meeting and Annual Breakfast. That's held in Bear Hill in Stonem. Are we not gonna allow that to be posted on our kiosks? The Independence Day Committee was just in front of us tonight. They have their Elks, their barbecue in the Elks in Linfield. Wakefield Chamber of Commerce has their golf tournament outside of town. The savings, the saving, excuse me, the Scholarship Foundation has their golf tournament at Bear Hill, again, out of town. Drama Club may have an action at Giggles or Fuddruckers. World War II Memorial, when that was going on, had their, had their items at Giggles. Warrior Club Golf Tournament, that I'll be putting a lot of balls into the woods in, that's at Thompson Country Club coming up. Boys and Girls Club, dodgeball, we all played it. They might be in Stonem next year. I think that all of these, personally, if I can continue, Mr. Chairman, all of these groups add to the vibrancy of Wakefield. They bring people down here and into our downtown. Drama Club puts on wonderful plays at the Galvin. We just talked about the Galvin. People go to the downtown, they have dinner, they see our shops. Friends of Lake, Corner Power, they're gonna be here a little bit later on, making a donation to one of our parks. All these people that come into the lake because of their efforts for the entire area. People come to see our monuments. Things were held outside of town. Certainly, the parents and players of the different sports teams and drama clubs are all around here. So I think that all of this does benefit and does go with the mission, even that number three. And I, then we talked, I know that, I know Julian and I had a lot of conversations about this going on as I did with some other members of the board. I think that's an important part of this policy. I would recommend frankly that that stay in.
One thing I may suggest as perhaps a compromise is, we do have, in essence, sixteen opportunities in these kiosks. We have four kiosks with four slots each, in essence. Perhaps we could consider something like, three-quarters of the kiosks need to be Wakefield-based events as compared with, you know, a potential out-of-town, even if it's on the periphery. Something to think about and consider, you know, for this body.
Because there aren't a huge number.
Right. But if that's enough to elate concern in terms of making sure that the intent is preserved, is respected, that might be something we may want to think about as one way of compromise. I think in practical terms, it's probably not going to be, very often, we're gonna have more than one out-of-town event via Wakefield group, but it at least creates those guardrails in that instance. Further comments or questions?
Just a quick comment. You know, one of the other pieces of feedback that I heard from a number of folks was the concern about, you know, are the kiosks intended to promote businesses versus community? concern about, you know, are the kiosks intended to promote businesses versus community organizations? And I just, you know, in thinking about this a lot over the last couple of days, you know, my perspective is that community engagement actually helps both. And the extent to which people are involved in our community organizations, like the Friends of the Lake, or, you know, anything else that we're doing, those are folks that also are more likely to shop locally in Wakefield, to dine locally in Wakefield. And so, you know, I very much have the perspective that sort of the rising tide lifts all boats. And so the fact that the policy that we've written is inclusive, and it's not just focused on promoting businesses, I think will help us promote businesses down the line. And so I do appreciate the work that went into it. I appreciate the number of folks that took a lot of time to comment on the policy. I think that's another sign of community engagement, and certainly think that this is something that, you know, I'm supportive of approving and hope that we revisit in six months or so and make sure that it's operating the way that we intended it to.
I do think it is also important to point out that we do reference Main Streets specifically twice in this policy, and I think that's in deference to what they've done to get us here. And one important piece is the, what I'll call evergreen content. That's content that shop local, or, you know, just artwork, to Julie's point. I expect that content will often be, you know, in these kiosks, because we don't have so many events, you know, to necessarily occupy. And so I do think that we are partnering with that organization in a real meaningful way going forward. So I think they do continue to have a voice in this process. Ultimately, this was a tremendous gift from them that sits on town property, and with that come, you know, town expectations of maintenance and regulation. And that's, I think, where we find ourselves now, but we can still strike that balance. I know both Julie and Peter, in your roles, in the communications capacity, can continue to reach out to Wakefield Main Streets as well, and, you know, take their temperature and see how things are going with it. Again, we can modify this policy as we find we need. Further comment? Counselor Butt?
I just, I wanted to thank Steve and Julie for working on this policy, and Tom for your help on it, too. I think it's a great policy. The one, and I, as you listed, Steve, all those events, I think I've been to almost all of them outside of town, and they're groups that we fully support, so I would want to see them. They do build a sense of community, supported by everyone. I like to think of, you know, I write policy for a living. I think that's our job on town council, that we write policy. I'm glad that it aligned with what Main Street was providing, but that that's our job, to vote on policy and draft it, and Julie and Steve did a great job. I then say then, I look to Steve and Jen McDonald to really be the implementators of this, and moving forward, you know, not, what we have in there was a draft run, but having things that look a little better and live up to the standards. And I really think implementation will fall on Sherry and Steve and Jen. I'm really looking at the three of you to be the implementators. And the one thing that I just want to give a little shout out to is, is we're being so specific about poster size, and as someone who has dedicated her life to nonprofits, once you move on behind, beyond eight and a half by 11, and you talk about magnetic film, you're asking a lot from nonprofits. And so just, you know, maybe Jen can kind of work on a little guidelines about, this is the print shop to go to, or this is how you do it. Just because I look at some of my, the boards that I'm on, and that's a lot to ask. It's a heavy lift, not even the expense, but just even knowing where to get a poster measuring 36 inches wide and 56.5 inches tall, that's on magnetic film. Like, that's just a lot to ask. So I like the specificity, but I think there needs to be kind of regulations and support on the backend.
Right. Can I, yes. When I went out there today to do some work on the kiosks, this was up there in one of them. And if you are going to have a 36, a full one, like we're going to have the maps, the historical map, they have to be on a magnetic to just look good and to stick good and to stay well and to stay neat and crisp. So I was, I pulled this out, and I put one of the thank yous up there, the smaller ones. I made them smaller, because those will be affixed. I also, I think, found a very good tape to use. I think we'll supply that tape for the posters. So they won't be so bad to go 18 by 24. I don't think that's too much of a leap, but we can, we can look at that. We want them to look uniform and what have you. So, thank you.
Any further discussion, or Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with basically everyone's comments, but my big concern that I don't think we're still finished with yet is, Main Streets put the money up. It is on town property, very tricky situation going forward, but I think there's a disconnect that Paul made a point on that was well taken, about keeping a connection, a strong connection with Main Streets. And I don't think cutting them loose 100%, which I think this is doing. I think we should have something, like a liaison, some person still connected with us. I don't think we should just pass this as is without keeping a connection with Main Street. I'm not sure exactly how to do that, but a liaison would be a person that certainly would keep the connection alive. But that's your general thought. Yeah, Paul, can you finish up?
Vice Chair Santos?
Sure.
So I think the liaison would be Paul and myself as the economic development folks. So for Main Street to know, Main Streets to know that they can reach out to us if they have a concern, I think that makes the most sense.
Not a representative as well.
You know, it's town property, on-town property, implemented by Town Hall. I know when this was first decided, I remember members that are no longer on the board being very strong about, you know, if it's town property, we really have to oversee it. We're maintaining it. So I think the way we, you know, we're not going to be, I can't imagine not listening to what Main Street says. If they have a concern, we might not always agree, but I can't imagine that we would not listen to them for all the good they do for the town. So I would not be in favor of having an official role, but just like, you know, we don't have someone officially in the police department, but we have a liaison, there's a back and forth.
I will say that this policy, Main Streets created guidelines, and this policy, I worked on it as well, and this is, this incorporates the majority, if not 99% of what Main Streets has asked for, or proposed to us. So I do think that we have shown goodwill in terms of making sure that we listen to what they have to say, and we have implemented accordingly, because most of the guidelines are incorporated, and Main Streets has specifically referenced, as I said, in at least in two locations that I see right here, within the policy itself. Counselor Chines?
Very briefly, I think that also speaks to the opportunity of maybe revisiting this, you know, formally as an agenda item, you know, within the town council in six months. And I would suggest that we invite Main Streets to come and present about what's worked well, and quite frankly, what hasn't worked well, so that if there are things we need to tweak about the policy, that we, you know, we take the opportunity to do it. I think we've got to get a policy in place, though, and, you know, it's not helping anyone's purposes for the kiosks to stay broken as they have been until very recently. And so, to me, I would recommend that we move forward, but be very open to that feedback from Main Streets, and in fact, schedule it affirmatively as an agenda item in the next several months.
All right. Item number 14H, then, is the passage of the kiosk posting policy for non-electronic kiosk posting, as contained within your packets following public comments. There is a motion that has been seconded on the floor, so seeing no further discussion. All of those in favor? So we have Counselor Dinoco, Smith Galvin, Counselor Butt, Counselor Chines, and Vice Chair Santos, and Don Browski, and all those opposed. Counselor May? All right, so the motion passes 6 to 1. Next on the agenda is item 14I, a possible donation from Friends of Lake Quanapawat.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, let me apologize. I unfortunately did not include our memo in the package when I was in a rush to send this up, so. But basically, I kind of recited to you quickly, it recommends that we accept $152,000 plus the contingency, if needed, from Friends of Lake Quanapawat for this project. Friends of Lake Quanapawat has been an outstanding organization to work with. We've accomplished a lot. Worked with them back in, when we built this park originally, and went through a lot with grants and everything to get where we are. There were obviously certain things we could not do that we would have liked to. And so this is an opportunity to make a great park even better. And personally, I want to thank them for all their support in working on this. And there are a number of them here, and Bill Connolly, and he'll talk about his proposal or his, their gift. We have been working with them for over a year on this project. And the project has a number of improvements to the park, and they're cited on the right-hand column of the plan I gave you.
Mr. Chairman, we can hardly hear them.
Okay.
Move up to the mic.
Okay, okay. So we have, we have nine items on the plan that will make the park even better from what it currently is. One is an irrigation system that will be installed. That irrigation system will be funded or supplied by well, well, in that area. There'll be two bio-retention areas that will be installed over towards the Quanapawat Ave side. There will be a kind of a drainage outlet by the beach area, because that erodes currently, so that will hopefully take care of that and repair that. The entire area will be re-loamed and seeded, so we kind of get better growth from what we have there now, because you obviously know that at certain times, we get a real dry spell. It will just burn right out up in that area. We will also be doing new pathways there. Currently, the paths kind of grow in because of the stone dust aspect, so we're going to put in a more permanent path there. And with that, all of this, and there's some other minor items there, there will be one path that will be eliminated that's not used. That's the one that comes down, or you'll see them in green on the plan. There are two, we're going to redo one, which is by the playground, to straighten that out. And we're going to eliminate the one that comes from Lowell Street down to the path, because that's not really used at all. The work is planned for this fall. We want to try to hit the growing season when we reseed, so there's not a lot of time. Also, we need to go to the Conservation Commission, who has final say on a lot of the items in this plan, especially the bio-swills that are being installed, the improvement to the drainage out to the lake to protect the beach, and even parts of the path is under their jurisdiction. With that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Make sure Jim can hear me. I think I'll address him, if you don't mind, Chairman and counselors. But, no, seriously, thank you, Rick. We're very happy to be here tonight. We started thinking about this park improvement to Spalding Connolly over a year ago, and we started trying to get on Rick's busy, busy schedule, our subcommittee, and we did. We had a number of meetings. Rick made his staff very, very available to us, and I want to thank his staff, the members of the team that he put together. We worked at a lot of details, we had many discussions, we had options that were on the table and off the table. We've been ending up in, we think, a very, very good place. So we're here tonight to donate and fund the project as written in your packet. We look forward to getting it started, if we can. We know there's a hurdle or two with ConCon, but we're going. We're very excited about all of it, but especially the education piece for the town. I mean, there'll be, I call it a demonstration area, but retention areas of actually doing what we want to do as a town, and what many, many towns should be doing relative to runoff. So we think that's a great opportunity with the traffic that goes by there, and we probably will even explain it, how it works, what it's intended to do. And I think it will really support the mission of the lake relative to the water quality, and also our mission of the parkland from the original Spalding grant. I think the Spaldings would be very, very happy with this project. So we hope you'll receive it warmly tonight. I want to thank Karen and Jim Scott, who are on the subcommittee, and we're in those many, many meetings we have, and a thank you to the town. I hope it's well received.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Comments? Counselor Chines?
First of all, thank you very much, you know, to the Friends of Lake Quanapawat. I mean, it's just a testament to your generosity and dedication to the community and to the lake, and, you know, it's great to see something like this go forward. I just had one quick sort of technical question on kind of the, some of the materials. So the plan calls for replacing the sort of stone dust pads with asphalt, which I'm assuming is related to just the maintenance of stuff growing through the stone dust, or...
It's maintenance, washout, and things growing through the stone dust. So it's a combination of those items.
Is there any impact, just from a drainage or runoff standpoint, by, you know, because of just the porous nature of stone dust, or...
Let me start first. Actually, we looked at a material that will drain water, and the more we talked about it and looked at it...
Yeah. So really, what we look at is, with stone dust, it essentially is an impervious material. And if we were to look at that from a technical standpoint, we would consider that impervious, same with a very tight gravel. So we looked at a porous asphalt as an option at one point. Really, that becomes cost prohibitive, because it's not really going to add a lot for the project, considering we have so much disconnected impervious area with the park itself. So any runoff coming off, it's really going to get infiltrated into the grass that's there. What we're proposing is enhancements to some stormwater that actually flows over Lake, over Quanapawat Parkway. So we have a little breakthrough, there's a small pipe, if you've ever been out there, and that basically is directing water straight into the lake, and it can flood out there as well. So we're looking at installing a catch base, and then some enhancements, so we'll get in the treatment and infiltration to improve the water quality to the lake.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Counselor Butt?
So I want to thank all of you for working on this. I have a question, a technical process question for Steve and Tom. I don't remember my time on the board getting a gift of this large a nature. It's such a generous gift. Do we do like a memo of understanding, so some of the questions that have actually come up with the kiosk about a gift and expectations on all sides are clear? Is that something we could work on?
Well, legally, what we have to do is, under Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, the town council has to accept the offer of funds for the purpose offered. If you do that, then we can spend the money without going to town meeting for appropriation, and we can spend it only for the purposes offered. Now, the legal theory, the question was going through my mind as I heard about this, we're going to end up doing the work or paying somebody to do the work. Query, are we going to be bound by the prevailing wage law? I think the answer is yes. I got to look into it, see if we can save some money on the theory that it's somebody else's money, it's a gift. Certainly, when money is gifted to the town, we are freed from the constraints of the public bidding law under Chapter 30B. Does that apply as well to prevailing wage? I don't know.
And if I can add, I think it's different than a lot of things. These projects, when you accept the gift, is managed by public works. So the plan that you see here is the one that will go to the Conservation Commission, who actually has the final say on a lot of these items in here. And we don't think there'll be a problem. We've talked to them preliminarily, but there will be some discussion on the bio-retention areas. They could end up being larger, smaller, they may have comments on that, and on the They could end up being larger, smaller, they may have comments on that, and on the swale. But I think generally, the plan that you see here is what will, what it will be. There'll be maybe some tweaks, like the location of the well. We could sit here and put in a memo that the well's going to be in the left corner up by Lowell Street, and you know what? You drill and you don't find water there, which is, even though the lake's there, that's a possibility. So there are things that are going to fluctuate based on the site conditions, but at the end of the day, the plan is a well will go in, because we don't want to use town water that we would have to pay for to irrigate this area.
If I may, this, Jim. I may not have answered the question entirely.
Yeah.
To the extent that you're concerned about making sure that the generous donor's intent is honored, we do that not, we don't necessarily have to do that through a memorandum of understanding, I don't rule it out if you, if the council wants it, but we do it because this statute says, if we're going to accept the money, we can only spend it for the purpose offered. So the, you, you see the package before you, that's the purpose that, for which it's offered. We can't turn around and use the money in some other dramatically different way.
Yeah, and, and my question, and I know it, they're so kind and so generous, and it's a group that I first joined when I moved to town. It's not that we would use the money for something else. It's the example that Mr. Stinson exactly gave, that the well isn't going to be placed where FOLQ envisioned it going, right? The material isn't exactly what folks envisioned, and I just, I, the attorney in me is just questioning that a little bit, but, but, you know, if, if we, I also, it makes sense to approve this now, even though it still needs to go to Conservation Commission, and then the plans could technically change. So would we, would it come in front of us again? Because then it's not the plans that we approve. So I just, I just want to make sure everyone, a gift this large and this generous, I just want to make sure we're all in the same place, because as, you know, Counselor Dinaco mentioned, by the time we approve something, and by the time it's implemented, three years have gone by, and so we're all on the same page.
This board's legal role is to accept the gift and to approve the terms. Now, if those terms change dramatically enough under the Conservation Commission, or any, for any other reason, that it becomes a different project, then yeah, I think you want to have it come back to you. But otherwise, I don't see an occasion for it doing so.
Also, if I can add, on the well, we've talked a lot with FOLQ about that that location may shift, because if you don't find water, it's going to move. If Conservation says, oh, you don't want it there, it'll move. So we've talked about that, we've talked about that, you know, a lot of those issues with them to cover all those questions.
Right.
So they understand that, that it's changing.
And sometimes it's nice just to have a written document, so everyone's on the same page, so after July 1st, when you're gone...
Well, I think that's what you have right here.
We're all, perfect, okay. Then if that, if that, if that takes the place of a kind of MOU agreement, and everyone's on board, and we're all signing off to this, then I'm okay with that.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
So my question is, does, do these funds cover, you said prevailing wage and some, some wage considerations in this. So is this covering materials and DPW time on this? I mean, I guess I've, I've seen kind of from a nonprofit standpoint, where you get a very generous gift, and it's great, but then it might cost, you know, $200,000 to implement it and an overhead, and I'm just wondering kind of, you know, where, are there any hidden costs that we're not seeing, that we wouldn't have been doing anyway, I guess?
This is going to cover all the costs for the materials and any contractors that are needed, which there will be contractors there. The, it does not cover DPW time. That's like, we would have to maintain this anyways.
So you're comfortable that this would be something?
Comfortable, it's going to fit in, and not talking a huge amount of labor time.
Okay.
But there will be some up there. There's been, obviously, time now, getting to this point, to put all this together, so...
I just, I think, you know, not in every case would we be so, I think in this case, obviously, but, you know, there might be things that are not on a town's priority. Someday, you get a gift, and, and we have to make tough decisions, but I don't think this is one of them, so thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? I just want to thank Friends of Lake Quanapowit so much for this. This is an incredible gift to this town. It's, it's remarkable, the commitment that you have to...
You're quite welcome, we're looking forward.
Absolutely, we look forward, and I think it's also a great example of a, of, you know, a public-private partnership that's really working. I know that DPW and FOLQ work so well together. I was at the Brick Dedication a few weeks ago, and just seeing the way in which DPW and FOLQ are just working hand in glove, it, it matters, and it's nice to have that kind of collaboration, and the extents, and the generosity that you've extended to us. It's, it's, this is going to be enjoyed by, you know, for, for many decades to come, and it's, and it's true improvement for anyone who enjoys the lake. So, so thank you, on behalf of the council and the town, for that. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to accept a, a very generous gift of $152,000 from Friends of Lake Quanapowit, specifically for the improvements to Gertrude Spalding and Colonel Connolly Parks, as, as outlined by Mr. Stinson.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, of this gift? Seeing none, a vote of seven, nothing. Thank you again so much. We truly appreciate it.
I'd like to thank Rich Stefan, a lot of the time, and that's, he's leaving us less than a month, you know? And our new engineer here's been a great guy that worked with the whole department.
Terrific.
We, for years, have had a good working relationship with the board, I was going to say selectmen and councilors now, for years, and I hope it certainly will continue, because that's our number one piece of living space.
Absolutely. No, thank you for that very much, Mr. Scott, we appreciate that. All right, so we're going to move on to our next item now? And that is item 14J, Order of Estimating Betterment. Mr. Mayo, are you going to speak to this one?
I think, I can very quickly...
Or Mr. Stinson?
14J and 14K are what was approved at our annual town meeting on April 29th. This was the taking of Flanders Lane, and these, one is the order of the estimation, estimating betterments to all of the butters on Flanders Lane, equally shared, as you may recall. And the second item, Order K, is the actual order of taking of that small area of Flanders Lane that was never taken by the town years and years and years ago, which is why we were here in the first place. This would allow the work to be done, and brought that up to grade. Is that quick enough for you?
Anything further after the DPW side? All right. Any preliminary questions from the council? All right, so we'll, we'll take them separately then. I'll entertain a motion regarding the order estimating a betterment for Flanders Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Open up for discussion. Seeing none, the vote before you is, is the town council to sign the order estimating betterment for Flanders Lane, as approved at the April 29th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, as Article 21. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven, zero, the motion passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion relative to the order of taking for Flanders Lane as a public way.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? The motion before you for vote then is the town council reviewing and signing the order of taking for Flanders Lane as a public way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a vote of seven, zero, motion passes. Item 14L, Roadway Betterment. Mr. Stinson or Mr. Mayo?
I'd just explain quickly...
Sure.
And many of you, I don't believe, were here when we did the article for Mount Pleasant as a betterment, to improve that. And what you do is you send that initial estimate in that goes on to the tax records, so that they would be accountable for that amount to pay. Once the project's done, if the amount is lower, this resets that amount, and in this case it is, and it's the final part of the process, to set the original amount. We can never go over what's appropriate at town meeting, but we always can go under, and this one goes under by quite a bit, so. So this will set their final tax amounts for the projects. They can choose to pay it off all at once, without any interest, they can pay it off over 20 years, or they can pay it off over 10 years.
All right, so I would like to entertain a motion to sign the Mount Pleasant Avenue and Everett Street certification to assessors to close out that project.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor then of the signing of the Mount Pleasant Avenue and Everett Street certification to assessors? Seeing a vote of seven, zero, the motion passes. Item number 15, Warrants. Counselor Dinaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
I reviewed the warrants probably about three, four weeks ago, I can't remember now when that occurred. We're spending a lot of money, it's going to good causes, keep us afloat. There was nothing of, of any highlight in, in this batch of items. Next batch, we'll see if there's anything more entertaining.
Again, any questions for Mr. Dinaco?
Just another question for Counselor Dinaco, but just in general, I think it would be helpful, I think, going forward, just if there were actually just a list of the warrants approved, kind of prior to us coming to the council meeting. You know, it's helpful to say 45 to 49, but just to understand sort of the, the inventory of what's there.
Counselor Dinaco?
I'm not sure what you're requesting. I mean, each warrant is, is multiple, multi-lined. How do you want me to extract certain components from it?
So I actually think it's less a question, Counselor Dinaco, for you, than maybe more for Mr. Mayo, about just, you know, is there like a, you know, a line item summary of the warrants that, you know, that Mr. Mayo...
Well, the warrants have, it's every bill that's paid for the town, including payroll and what have you during that time. What the council has done, has assigned a warrant signer to handle that for you, instead of going through it. I'll see what I can do with the town accountant, but they're, they're voluminous, you need to go through the whole thing from paying for water for a school event will be on there from paying the payroll, so...
$12,000 for a, a vehicle to, for a handicapped child pickup. I mean, it could be any numerous, so that's why I'm trying to get an idea of what you're actually requesting as another alternative to being a presentation. I mean, I can list everything that's here, but it'll probably take about an hour and a half.
Yeah, no, again, I think it's more from a town accounting standpoint, you know, I mean, you know, what is sort of the top line light item of, you know, here are the four warrants that were paid that...
Every item on, on the warrant is an important issue. So in my eyes, they're all valid, so I don't know which one I would pick as being more prominent than the other.
So again, maybe just to clarify, I'm not looking for necessarily...
Counselor Chines?
Sorry, I'm not looking necessarily for a voluminous report from Counselor Dinaco, you as kind of our representative. It's more in our packet, so that we have the backup material, just to understand, like, what were those for? Again, like a line item, not the detail, but like a line item, you know, warrant of $1,000 paid to X, warrant of whatever it is.
My, my understanding is that there are a number of Xs.
Yeah.
So when you say the dollar amount, there are a number of Xs that are paid to, is that a fair understanding?
One of the warrants that I signed was for about $2.6 million, and it had probably about 40 Xs in it. Which one would you like me to highlight, other than that it was $2.6 million?
The two-point, again, not you, the $2.6 million.
That's why I'm asking for clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, one at a time, so, town administrator.
Why don't I suggest this? Why don't I go over that with Counselor Chines, to see what he's actually looking for, so we can make sure that gets into the...
If you both could maybe do that, and then Counselor Chines, if you could come back in, if you, you want to, you know, maybe define more specifically what you think would be, make the most sense then, then you could communicate with Counselor Dinaco on that.
We can always have Mr. Chines be the signer of the warrant, and that would alleviate the problem.
I think, if I may...
All right, so, one at a time, so, Counselor Chines?
Yeah, it's less sort of my information, I think it's more from a, a process control standpoint for the town council as the governing body of the community, to have some visibility on the warrant signed. Again, this is not a reflection, Counselor Dinaco, on, on sort of...
I'm not taking it as a reflection on me.
Counselor Dinaco?
Mr. Chairman, if you may, if I may, please, we did this to ease the council on doing it. I'll make a motion that we put the warrant in front of all seven members again, as we had it in the past, if that's how much he wants it, and that's in the form of a motion right now, Mr. Chairman. Put the warrant in front of everyone again, let them look over the entire packets, and eliminate the warrant signer, because that's what he's looking for, give it to him. So with my blessing, let him do that, and let everyone here have a say in that matter. That's all, in the form of, do I have a second on that, please?
Let me see if I can work that out.
Mr. Chairman, withdraw me from the signers of warrant, please. I, I don't think I'm going to be able to accommodate Mr. Chines in his degree of, of information that he's looking for.
Can I just reiterate, Mr. Chairman, again? I'm not asking you, Counselor Dinaco, to do anything different. It's just a question of, is there a summary of the warrants that we can work with the town accountant to have in our packet?
But what I would suggest is, I think it's probably best to maybe interface with Mr. Mayo to go through some of the warrants and understand the content, and then from there, we could perhaps, you know, refine any processes to make sure that there's enough information out there, certainly. So we'll look into that. That's something that we can do between now and the next meeting. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I would just like to say that I actually think that we should be working towards an open checkbook, so that everybody is seeing every single bill that's being paid in towns, done in very many other towns, and I think that that, you know, eventually, maybe that's not a, a short-term solution, but I am very much an advocate that every single taxpayer should be able to see every bill we pay.
Anything further? All right, so, thank you, Counselor Dinaco, for that update. Item number 16 is matters unanticipated for the agenda. Are there any that were not anticipated within the last 48 hours? Seeing none, item number 17?
No, okay, they're both, 17 and 16 and 17 kind of blend for me, so I can talk about what I was going to talk about in either one.
All right, fair enough. So item number 17 is announcements and acknowledgements. Again, if you have something, raise your hand, it'll be called on, otherwise, Vice Chair Santos.
Sorry, it's much better, it fits onto this one. Okay, so I have two things. I accepted Chris Carino's invitation to tour Albion Cultural Exchange, had a great tour, spent probably a little over an hour with him going through everything, and, and I'm not the liaison, but I, he invited every one of us, and I showed up. So it's exciting that those bathrooms should be going in, that bid should go out, they were waiting for something, a stand from the architect. I had talked to both DPW and Chris about working together very closely to really move this project forward, and I think there's a lot of great things happening, there's a lot of vision at A, so that was exciting. Second point, Megan Burnett Tournament is this weekend, they are looking for volunteers. I'm able to slip in sometime before a wedding I'm heading to on Saturday. I'm going to send the email with, Julie and I might have just got it...
Yes.
...because of our softball connections, so I'm going to send it to the rest of the town councils, it's been all over Facebook, so they are looking for some bodies to work, like snacks and things like that. It's a, it's a great town-wide event for a very special young woman and for the softball program.
Thank you, Vice Chair Santos. Anyone else have any acknowledgements or announcements? Counselor Butt?
Just, I was looking at my calendar, I just want to remind everyone about the food pantry, Wakefield Food Pantry is 5K on July 14th, that's before our next meeting, it's just around the lake, information on their website, just to remind everyone about that.
Great, thank you for that. Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Very briefly, I was going to mention the Megan Burnett as well, I think that's a great event, that they definitely need people. Tomorrow, Bluegrass on the Common is the Linden Trees, kind of give back to the community, so it's free on the Common, if it's going to rain, which it looks like it may, I think it's in the UU church. And then just before our next meeting starts the WCAT Movies by the Lake with Willy Wonka on July 11th, and it's a little different this year, it's every Thursday consecutive for five Thursdays, and if there's a rain date, then it's just, it follows. So you just know to be Thursday nights at the lake for movies.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one. Somebody left their cell phone here, who was in the audience tonight, so if you're still watching, WCAT will have your cell phone here, I'll give it to Tom Stapleton.
And then, obviously, because without saying...
And it's going off, too.
July 4th is, this is the place to be, and so by all means, there's great activities all morning into the afternoon with the Westside Social Club, the parade, obviously, beginning out at 5:00, and then fireworks in the evening as well. We hope to see everyone there. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by... Moved by Counselor Chines, seconded by Mr. May. All those in favor?
Aye.
And with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Longest ever?